Thank you councillors. Almighty God, we the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask that you guide us in the decisions we make here today. Amen. We acknowledge this country and Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islanders as traditional custodians, their language, songs and dance. We pay respect to elders past, present and emerging. May we continue to peacefully walk together in respect and in caring for this country and one another. Thank you. Please be seated. I declare the meeting open. Are there any apologies? councillor Landers.
Mr Chair, I advise that councillor Huang and councillor Marks will be absent today and I move that they be granted a leave of absence from the meeting. Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Hutton that councillors Huang and Marks be granted leave of absence from today's meeting. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillor Griffiths.
Yes, thanks Mr Chair. I just advise councillor Johnson will be absent from the meeting today and ask for a leave of absence.
Seconded. It has been moved by councillor Griffiths and seconded by councillor Cassidy that councillor Johnson be granted leave of absence from today's meeting. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, I draw to your attention the motion of appreciation at item two on the agenda. Lord Mayor, will you please move the motion?
Thank you Mr Chair. I move, in recognition of Domestic and Family Violence Prevention Month, council extends its deepest gratitude and appreciation to all organisations involved with programmes of care, education and counselling for victims of domestic and family violence. We reinforce our commitment and support for these organisations in addition to the action items in our own domestic and family violence strategy. Further, this council supports the recent decision by the state government to ensure that coercive control becomes a criminal offence in Queensland. And we offer our deepest sympathies to the families and individuals across the city who have been affected by this violence in any way.
Thank you.
Seconded.
Seconded by councillor Cunningham. It has been moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by councillor Cunningham, the motion of appreciation which has been circulated to all councillors in the agenda. Is there any debate? Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Motions of appreciation such as these don't come around very often. And the main one that happens every year is to thank our council workers and in particular the frontline workers that do a fantastic job for our city. But this is an unusual motion because it is different. It is also, I think, an acknowledgement that there are people out there on the front line in the fight against domestic and family violence, each and every day, making significant progress in inroads. And it is important that we acknowledge those people and those organisations, but also to thank and commend the state government for taking an important step forward which we saw announced last week. Now, I want to start by acknowledging Sue and Lloyd Clark and also Teesh from Small Steps for Hannah who are in the gallery. There's not a day that goes past when I don't think of Sue and Lloyd Clark and when I don't think of Hannah and her three beautiful children. And I genuinely mean that, every day, every day. And every day, also, on the way to and from work or wherever I'm going, I go past Hannah's place at Whitesill, opposite the Whitesill State College. And every day, I'm reminded of the loss that Sue and Lloyd have suffered, but the loss our community has suffered, the loss their family has suffered, and the tragedy of it Nothing will ever change this or take it away, the loss that has been experienced. Nothing will take away the grief, but for Sue and Lloyd and Small Steps for Hannah, they were determined to make sure that something good came out of something so evil. Something good came out of it. And that is a big task. This is a scourge, domestic and family violence, that we have been facing as a community for too long, for decades and decades and decades. And there have been precious few times when we have made significant progress in that fight, precious few. But last week was one of them, where I believe substantial progress has been made. Last week, we saw a report delivered to the state government and we saw a long list of recommendations which will be accepted by the government and implemented, but also particularly the criminalisation of coercive control. I think this is one of the most important advancements and steps forward that will have been made in this fight. I think it is that important. But when you think about it, until more recent times, and until the campaign that we've seen spearheaded by Small Steps for Hannah, by Sue and Lloyd and by other fantastic organisations, the words coercive control were not well known in our community. Now, you will struggle to find anyone who does not know about coercive control. It is out there. And people are now understanding that domestic and family violence is not only about the physical violence that happens, which is unspeakable and evil, but also the emotional abuse and the control that comes alongside. And the fact that people in these situations of domestic violence, men or women or of any gender, that suffer this kind of abuse, they may not have the bruises on their skin, but they have the bruises inside from this physical and emotional abuse that happens. And so now, thanks to the work of Small Steps for Hannah and Sue and Lloyd and so many other fantastic charities, we all know about coercive control. Everyone in the community knows about it. And now we have a plan and an agreement from government that they will criminalise this behaviour. This is a massive step forward. And so, while today is, it's always a sad day to reflect on the incredible loss, incredible devastation, the despair, it's also a day to look to the future with positivity because steps are being taken. And this is a positive day. And so, I want to thank in particular the state government for their response, the premier and the key ministers that have stepped up and agreed to do what needs to be done. And this is an area where Queensland will now lead the way in Australia. And in many respects, lead the world when it comes to this kind of response. Because there are so many other parts of Australia where coercive control is not a crime, there are so many other parts of the world where it is not a crime, and so many other parts of the world don't even know about this concept of coercive control. So, it is a day that we should look to with positivity. This is, this is a scourge in our society that can so easily get us all down. It can, like the scale of the challenges that are faced in our community, and we just heard earlier from Bob Atkinson in particular and his experience and the statistics about just the extent of domestic violence responses and incidents that the police are responding to across Queensland, over 300 per day, each and every day, 300 per day, each and every day, or 120,000 a year. And then the estimation that only 20% of actually domestic violence incidents that are happening are actually reported, scale is monumental. And so, today, the purpose of this motion is to simply say thank you. Thank you to Sue and Lloyd, to Small Steps for Hannah, thank you to those, so many domestic violence charities that are out there that have done the foundation work, that have done so much for so long, but to bring us to this point, but also thank you to the Queensland government and the premier in particular for moving forward with it. And so, I know that this motion will get support across the board, as it should, but I think it is appropriate that we put it on the record today, our thanks for such important steps forward in what is such a vital fight in our community. Thank you Mr Chair.
Thank you Lord Mayor. Further speakers, councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much Chair. I rise to speak in support of this motion on behalf of Labor councillors. One in three women in Australia have experienced domestic and family violence and one in five women in Australia have been sexually assaulted. Ten a day are hospitalised and one in three of those of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander descent. And as the Lord Mayor said, over 300 a day, one report every five minutes of domestic and family violence occurring and we know that that is significantly under-reported. So the support that domestic and family violence service providers provide our city and its residents is vital and it is life-saving and we know that. Labor councillors would like to thank every organisation across Brisbane that devotes themselves to supporting women, children and families dealing with such debilitating hardship. The likes of White Ribbon Australia, Micro Projects, Anglo Care, Relationships Australia, DV Connect, Beyond DV, Women's Legal Service, 1-800 RESPECT, Four Voices, all do fantastic work here in Brisbane, locally in my ward. Of course, would love to give a shout out to Sandbag, Share the Dignity, Women's Space and Kibing Guide, just to name a few who do some amazing work on the north side. I know there are dozens more across our city that do amazing work and as we heard today, there are over 500 service providers, community-run organisations, working in this space right now across Queensland. And the people that work for these organisations are often volunteers who dedicate their time, money and their lives to this cause. So to each and every one of you, your work doesn't go unnoticed. On behalf of Labor councillors, we thank you greatly for everything you do to support Brisbane residents battling domestic and family violence. But we do, we do believe, and we say this a lot, that motions like this do need to be backed with action. Now, Brisbane City Council has a domestic violence strategy because of the leadership of councillor Cara Cook. And I do want to pause for a moment and say thank you to councillor Cook for that leadership in this space. Councillor Cook has dedicated her working life to supporting those affected by domestic and family violence and that work has of course now continued while she is a councillor. I'm not sure if the Lord Mayor or other councillors thanked you for that leadership, but on behalf of Labor councillors, I do, councillor Cook. Now, this council does need to do more than just talk about domestic violence, it needs to act on the issue and support these organisations more through any means necessary. And we've heard some examples just today in the presentation we had earlier about other council areas doing some amazing work with community organisations. And last week, we saw the Labor government bring in the legislation making coercive control a criminal offence. We hear today the news that unions have secured 10 days of paid leave for people fleeing domestic violence through the Fair Work Commission, which just today has changed the lives of millions of Australians. Councillors can simply, cannot simply just thank others for the work, we need to do more, particularly as the largest council in Australia. The domestic violence strategy that was brought to council by councillor Cook needs to be continually updated, reviewed and strengthened to ensure the community is supported by their council and new initiatives should be funded and supported on an ongoing basis. So this issue should be a priority for all levels of government, we agree, and Labor councils will continue to make sure that this is a priority for council.
Thank you councillor Cassidy. Further speakers, councillor Cunningham.
Yes, thanks Mr Chair. I rise to speak on the special motion of appreciation today. In doing so, I want to acknowledge and extend my gratitude to the organisations and indeed the volunteers that serve the residents of my ward and our entire city, but also those Brisbane residents who worked tirelessly in their advocacy for change. There are many individuals within my own community who deserve to be recognised for their commitment to assisting vulnerable people and it is not possible for me to name each and every single one of them. However, there are a few whose ongoing advocacy and commitment to the cause must especially be recognised. One of the best things about local government in my view is how it impacts people directly in their daily lives. And part of that is getting to know people from all different backgrounds and experiences. Two people who I have met, who have profoundly shaped my life, are my residents Lloyd and Sue Clark, the parents of Hannah. About two years ago, on one of the darkest days for my community, I stood alongside others to support them through their anger, their grief and their pain. What happened to Hannah and her three beautiful children on a suburban leafy street in Camphill strikes to the heart of many. But it is something that I too will never ever forget, Lord Mayor, and it is something that I will never be able to come to terms with. It's something that stays with me, it haunts me and I know it haunts others too. I stayed on Raven Street that day and the days after, as people flooded in. I met men, women and children, locals as well as some who have travelled hundreds of kilometres, who came there that day to lay tributes. People in shock, people who didn't know how to respond, people who were just like me, who couldn't make sense of what happened. Through this, I got to know people and I got to know Hannah's family better. What I learned is that people needed and wanted to be cared for. At the site, I worked with Chaplain Watch, Lifeline and Red Cross, as well as local police and council teams to help manage some of the practical issues that arose. These organisations, as well as many others, continue to provide practical assistance, care and support for victims of domestic and family violence and we should be thanking them for that. On that fateful day, there was a whole team and I want to especially thank the first responders. Many of these frontline workers experienced trauma like this more regularly than what I can ever accept. In the days, the weeks, the months and now the years following that event, I still regularly speak with Sue and Lloyd about the importance and the value of having a simple conversation. Particularly the value that can come from having conversations with young people about what normal relationships are, but more importantly, what they are not. Despite the pain and the suffering that they will endure for the rest of their lives, Sue and Lloyd get out of bed each and every day and give every ounce of strength that they have left to the Small Steps for Hannah Foundation. This is something I'm obviously proud to help them with and will remain committed to the foundation as a director. As a foundation, we are working to bring attention to the issue of coercive control and the damage it can have on families every single day. The foundation is a movement for change. The change sought is to put a halt to the incidences and severity of domestic and family violence in Australia. In case you haven't realised, HALT stands for Hannah, Aleah, Leyana and Trey. It is the hope of Sue and Lloyd that we can harness the collective desire to make possible changes required to halt domestic and family violence and take the steps that are required to do it. Small steps that will lead to giant leaps. It is their unwavering advocacy, their bravery and their strength, which is what I believe has led to change here in Queensland. There is no doubt that all levels of government have a role to play. Council's role is focused on educating and supporting the community. As a civic cabinet chair of this council, I am firmly committed to our domestic and family violence strategy. As lawmakers, each of the state governments must lead the way for legislative reform. It is pleasing to see the Queensland government has responded to calls for change and stepped closer to criminalising coercive control and I do commend them for that. This is an important step in history and it shows that we, as Lloyd and Sue and others, all speak up about domestic and family violence and have conversations, our voices will get louder. So today, I want to especially thank and recognise Sue and Lloyd as part of this motion. While I have no doubts that your advocacy and your tireless efforts have contributed to change, this change has come at a cost which no parents should ever have to endure. You and your family has paid the ultimate price. I know there are days that you were crippled by the pain and overcome by loss. But Hannah, Aleah, Leyana and Trey's death have not been in vain. You should be commended and this council commends you. I want to personally again note my sincere thanks and appreciation for what you were doing on behalf of other people. Your small steps are leading and indeed have led to governments making change. So thank you and I am certain that Hannah will be proud.
Thank you councillor Cunningham. Further speakers, councillor Frey.
Thanks Chair. I rise to speak on the motion and to thank other councillors for their contributions. I think it's obviously a very important issue and I wanted to sit with the grief and trauma that everyone who's affected by this carries and recognise that as councillors we're often supporting people in these situations of crisis and that we might not always be fully aware of the trauma that we're also secondarily experiencing and it's good to be mindful of that. But I particularly wanted to shout out to the many support services and organisations that work in this space, particularly some of the smaller orgs. There's a crew called Women's House Shelter based, I think they're now in Cooperoo Ward actually, they used to be in the Gabba Ward, but they've got an amazing story. They set up one of the first domestic violence shelters in the country, I believe, certainly one of the first in Queensland. And they did it actually by squatting some empty properties because the government at the time wouldn't set up domestic violence shelters and so they took over some empty buildings and turned that into a women's refuge and the project's still going strong many decades later. But there are so many organisations like them, countless examples across the city. And I think probably all of us at times feel a little bit bewildered or despondent that despite the wave of community concern and awareness and support for taking action on this issue, it continues to remain a blight in our society. And some of those statistics we heard in the presentation earlier really are sobering and perhaps reveal the weaknesses of strategies of change that don't focus deeply enough on cultural change and behavioural change at the grassroots level. And I think there's still a lot to be done in that space. In some of the community workspaces I've been connected to, we sort of have this idea or concept that violence flows downhill and it's important to think about the forms of violence that are normalised in society or that become accepted. I did make a comment earlier in the presentation about the fact that Centrelink as an institution also engages in coercive control on a regular basis. It controls how people spend their money, it penalises them if they don't answer the phone at the right time, I could give many more examples, but there are plenty of examples in our society of government institutions and of businesses and companies that also engage in behaviours that could be described as controlling or abusive or in some cases overtly violent. And it's important that we, when we think about social change and cultural change and we think about why it is that this problem keeps recurring in society despite most of us being obviously outraged about it, we need to recognise that it is something systemic and that these behaviours are learned and transmitted within sort of the very cultural fabric of the society of which we are a part. And I think that sometimes gets missed in the conversations where we say, oh, that bloke is a terrible person, look what he did, without talking about the broader societal factors that have turned someone towards committing those kinds of monstrous acts. And I don't think there is enough space in mainstream political discourse for those more nuanced conversations. I think it's great that we're discussing this issue here today, but we do need to recognise that the prevalence of domestic violence in our society is a symptom of a flawed system more generally and I would argue a flawed society more generally. This is a part of our society and it's a part of our culture and that should prompt and force some deeper reflections on what's going wrong with our world more generally. I won't go on a long lecture about police violence, but I do think that's part of this conversation as well. And I've heard many stories of people who are on the receiving end of state violence and then go on to engage in acts of violence themselves. And like I said at the start, violence does flow downhill and to some extent, violence can be contagious, it can be learned and spread and governments have a role, I think, in spreading violence without realising it sometimes. I'm in particular obviously very concerned about coercive control and I thought the mayor was right, that it's great to see this conversation coming to the surface a bit more and more people learning this vocabulary and becoming aware of this stuff. Personally, I'm going to be abstaining from the motion because I haven't yet seen the legislation that the state government has brought forward and I don't want to be misconstrued as supporting something that I haven't actually read. I don't believe the legislation has been in the public realm yet. I am mindful that quite a few prominent legal researchers, scholars and academics, including a lot of Indigenous women, have been very critical of some of the dominant discourses around criminalisation of coercive control. A lot of theorists have been saying, look, yeah, coercive control is a big problem, but there are some pretty significant side effects or consequences of the criminalisation approach, which again, I don't think we have time to go into here today, but are worth at least acknowledging. There's an organisation based in Brisbane called the Institute of Collaborative Race Research and they partnered with a legal service, a community legal service called Sisters Inside, which will be familiar to some of you. As part of the, they made a submission into the Women's Safety and Justice Task Force on that discussion paper. It's a really interesting document to read and worth the time. The title of it is The State as Abuser: Coercive Control in the Colony. And for all of us here who are seeking to understand and think through these issues of coercive control in greater depth, I encourage councillors to maybe take the time to have a read of that document, The State as Abuser: Coercive Control in the Colony. It's produced by reputable lawyers, academics and frontline workers in the domestic violence space who among other things highlight the concerns that for many vulnerable and marginalised women and particularly Indigenous women, there are some very legitimate concerns about the fact that criminalising coercive control could end up criminalising victims of domestic violence depending on how some of those offences are defined and depending on how some of those systems work out in practice. So while obviously we can all stand here and say we're very concerned about coercive control and these abusive behaviours, I do think we need to look at the evidence and the submissions that frontline workers and legal experts are putting forward and highlighting that there are concerns that need to be addressed and seriously considered here. So, yeah, I won't labour the point too much, but I'm obviously very supportive of the broad intent of the motion. I think it's great that we're acknowledging Domestic and Family Violence Prevention Month. I think it's really important that we thank and show gratitude to all those frontline service workers and everyone in this advocacy space who's been doing so much to advance this cause. But yeah, I will be abstaining just because I haven't actually seen the legislation that the motion is in support of. Thank you.
Thank you. Further speakers? Any further speakers? Oh, sorry councillor Atwood, I just didn't see on the screen. Councillor Atwood, you have a call.
Thank you Chair. I'd also like to offer my heartfelt appreciation to those who do so much in this space. But unfortunately, it is an issue so prevalent in our community. Yesterday, I called the local police station to let them know that some lights at a major intersection was flashing yellow. The officer in charge advised that all of his crews were at a serious domestic violence incident and he'll call the traffic branch to assist. Immediately, I started thinking, who is this poor lady? Why is someone assaulting her at two in the afternoon or any time for that matter? Does she have children? Did they witness it? My heart bled for her and it made me so angry that someone would do this to another human. Statistics show that women who leave violent or controlling relationships return to their partner seven times before they leave for good. Some of the most common reasons include, they feel no one else will want them, they have nowhere to go or that they can't afford to live by themselves. So many women doubt their capability to live independently and often have lost all self-confidence. Carolyn Robinson from Beyond DV unfortunately watched her daughter go through an emotional and physically abusive relationship. Finally, when her daughter left, Carolyn tried her best to support her but soon realised there was a lot of help for women to leave relationships but little assistance going forward in helping to rebuild their lives and confidence. So Carolyn left her career at a local school and devoted her time and money to starting a charity that helps and supports women beyond their domestic violence relationship in 2017. In 2020, I had the wonderful opportunity of meeting Carolyn. She was awarded a council lease building in Carina. It was their first home, it's called Lilian's Place. Since then, they've established a Hope Hub in Northgate and West Brisbane to support women and children throughout innovative and recovery programmes and additional services such as their Pathway to Hope programme. Carolyn came to council last year and spoke to us about it and the Lord Mayor funded for a further for a further three years, so I'm really grateful that the Shirena councillors funding this amazing programme. It helps women rebuild their financial independence. It helps them through counselling services, legal help, career mentoring, multiple training and employment opportunities and the list goes on. I've been to some of their graduation ceremonies where Carolyn takes the ladies to Stephen Hairdressers in West End and then they go out for lunch afterwards. It honestly makes their day, they feel really special and gives them a big boost, which they really deserve. Beyond DV are continuing to go from strength to strength alongside Small Steps for Henna in this space. Only a few months ago, they opened up a new Hope Hub together at Westfield Carindale, the first of its kind in Australia. It's manned seven days a week in a highly secure and accessible location, open to all the community members with a focus on providing information and support around domestic violence and mental health. Many who are in domestic violence relationships are restricted on where they can go, but many can go to the bank or the grocery store, which is perfect why it's located in Westfield. This is such a big step forward in supporting our community. At the Hope Hub's official opening a few months ago, a lady from the bank brought someone up who needed help. It was only the first morning. The teller said she broke down in tears and asked what was going wrong. The lady told her and the teller immediately brought her up. All of the staff at Westfield Carindale have been trained to help as well, which is incredible. Carolyn has been an amazing advocate in this space, including her advocacy along Small Steps for Henna to criminalise coercive control. Last Tuesday, I spoke to Carolyn about the new legislation and she was so, so happy. She's been speaking about it for years, like so many organisations, and she said it was an excellent outcome, so I'm really, really glad to hear that. In summary, I just wanted to thank every person across our city, our state and our country for helping to make change and to support our women who are some of the most vulnerable children and women in our communities. To Sue and Lloyd, sorry I'm not there today, but thank you as well for what you do in this space, it's incredible and I'm so grateful.
Thank you, councillor Atwood. Further speakers? Any further speakers? Lord Mayor? Thank you. I'll now put the motion. Those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. Abstent? Any abstentions? Thank you. The ayes have it. Congratulations. Confirmation of minutes, please.
Mr Chair, I move that the minutes of the 4,678th meeting held on Tuesday 10th of May 2022 be received, taken as read and confirmed.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Hutton that the minutes of the 4,678th meeting of council held on 10 May 2022 be received, taken as read and confirmed. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it.
A point of order.
Point of order?
Just on a procedural matter, Chair. I have requested this through the CEO officially, but given you are in charge of the chamber, I just want to find out for how much longer after a council meeting concludes do those recorders which are sitting up in front of the clerks record the council meeting? Happy for you to get back to me, but that's a record that I've requested, haven't heard back from yet, but I would just like to know if that's something that is in your control as the presiding officer over this place? I know they're used as a backup for the recordings in here.
Short answer, it's not in my control. I believe it's for hand side backup in case there's a mic not on, but it's not out of my control, but if you've asked a question of the CEO, I'm sure he'll respond to you in due course. Councillors, we have a public participant today. I'd like to call on Mr Alan Ball, who will address the chamber on White Ribbon Australia. Thank you, Mr Ball. Billy's showing you to your seat. Thanks, Mr Ball. You have five minutes. You can sit or stand depending on your preference. Your five minutes begins when the little green light goes on. Thank you.
Mr Chair, Lord Mayor and councillors, thank you for the opportunity today on this historic day. I also wanted to first acknowledge the traditional owners of this land and pay my respects to elders past and present. Not all disrespect leads to violence, but all violence starts with disrespect. Right now, across Brisbane, Queensland and Australia, the shadow pandemic, which is men's violence against women and children, is eroding the sense of safety. White Ribbon Australia is currently working within the city of Brisbane, right across Australia as well, to stop violence before it starts and that effectively is what primary prevention is about. I wanted Brisbane City Council to hear today four things that we're asking. First of all, we would like you to continue to strengthen your strategy about family and domestic violence internally and across the city. We'd like you to join or consider other councils across Australia, including the city of Townsville, to adopt a whole of organisation independent audit of your culture, policies, practices and procedures known as White Ribbon Australia Workplace Accreditation. We are currently working with Brisbane citizens on boarding them as community partners to design community response plans to stop violence before it starts. On November 18th in 2022, we are requesting that Brisbane City Council joins us as well as the rest of Australia in acknowledging White Ribbon Day. What White Ribbon Day does is it doesn't stop violence, but it acknowledges that violence exists, particularly men's violence against women and their children. We're asking you to join us in our theme this year, which is to call for healthier masculinities that lead to healthier communities and to understand what drives violence to begin with, to look at the systemic and the structural changes that drive violence. We ask you to bathe Brisbane in white that night and join other iconic structures across Australia as a symbol of solidarity because that's what the white ribbon represents. And we want you to continue to be a proud supporter of us. We really, really do appreciate the work that you do already and what you'll continue to do with us. What we do acknowledge is that gendered violence and the drivers of violence are the system and the structural changes that need to occur. Gender equality creates a strong tapestry of inclusivity, opportunity and safety for women. And it's not lost on me that I'm sitting here on historic day in this council, in a historic month across Queensland, and I work nationally. You are leading the way, you absolutely are, and I wanted to acknowledge that first and foremost. And even if not meant to or desired, I'm an Australian bloke and I need to do my role and continue to do my role in ending gendered based violence. I don't know about you, but time for crawling towards gender equality, I'm a little bit sick of it. I put my sneakers on and I'm sprinting towards that gender equality and I hope you'll join me and acknowledge the work that we're doing across Brisbane as well as the rest of Australia. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Ball. Anybody responding? Councillor Cunningham? Thank you.
Yes, thanks, Mr Chair. Firstly, can I thank you, Alan, on behalf of the Lord Mayor and the councillors for being here to present on behalf of White Ribbon? My name is Fiona Cunningham and I'm the Chair of City Governance and Administration. So it's within my portfolio responsibilities to have the Domestic and Family Violence Strategy. So as you know, of course, May is Domestic and Family Violence Prevention Month, so it's important to have months and events which call out the significance of causes. To make an impact though, we need to make sure that every month is about the prevention of domestic and family violence. This is an issue which affects all postcodes and all suburbs at all times of the year and in Brisbane, as a council, we support the right of all people to live in a family or domestic relationship free from violence, abuse or intimidation. Domestic and family violence occurs mostly behind closed doors, but we know that the impacts are felt beyond home, in our community and this also extends into our workplace. As an employer of thousands of people and as a level of government closest to people, we are all too aware that domestic and family violence is a widespread issue. Everyone has a responsibility in how they respond to it. Of course, as I've said before, all governments play a crucial role. The state is the legislative assembly and is charged with the lawmaking powers and they are the lead agency for D F V response. But council must have a role to educate and support the community on top of our responsibilities to our employees. Your job and your employer makes up the part of the identity of who you are as a person. Victims and survivors experience anxiety, difficulty concentrating and impacts to punctuality, attendance and colleague relationships in their workforce. Brisbane City Council has combined the many and varied aspects that is in our organisation that play a role in preventing and responding to domestic and family violence into this single strategy. However, council has provided domestic and family violence leave since 2016. So in late 2019, we engaged with 25 agencies in preparation of the strategy. We're always open to feedback and I know that you've noted specifically four areas, so very happy to meet with you and go through that. Our strategy is available on our website and I know that your organisation has recently been in contact with our Human Resources branch and as part of that engagement, White Ribbon has already suggested to council to look at implementing more face-to-face activities. So I have spoken to the Divisional Manager of Organisational Services and can confirm today that we will take your advice. We have arranged for more face-to-face engagement and awareness opportunities and will be continuing to look at further opportunities. So what you can't see from the outside is that council is already doing a lot of things behind the scenes. As I previously said, we have the Domestic and Family Violence Leave, we have a 24/7 confidential support service available to our employees. Our internet portal provides a safe space to access specialist support services, leave options and flexible work arrangements. I wanted to also let you know that we have recently partnered with Workhaven, which is a Brisbane-based organisation. I don't know if you've heard of them before, but it was formed by corporate leaders with experience, basically of these issues in the workplace and the combination of their professional knowledge and in-depth understanding of this sensitive topic enables them to provide employers with important tools, insights and information to help facilitate the right conversations. So the Fresh Start For Me Programme supports employees to rebuild after domestic and family violence. This is a 10-week programme for people who were impacted and we're offering that at council. The programme helps people to identify what's important in their life, the areas that they need to support and create a workable plan to rebuild and thrive. The programme is also completely confidential and we're not made aware of any of the details. To mark D F V Prevention Month this month, Alan, council has implemented a number of special internal comms communication projects to raise awareness. So we've had an email to all council staff, we've had posters put on the back of toilet doors in all our facilities. Our D F V strategy also identifies ways that council can continue to raise awareness and partner with peak organisations like yourself and to support and educate the community. Just in this budget, we committed $100,000 a year over the next three years for women's legal service to support a hotline, offering free information and referrals to women reaching out for help. We've committed more than $150,000 to Beyond DV as well to provide certification training and a range of other courses as well as financial counselling. Funding has gone towards Homes of Peace Transitional Housing Programme, which helps women and children leaving domestic and family violence and grants have also been allocated to Four Voices. So we've also worked with Lifeline to deliver domestic violence awareness training out in the community. Last week, I had the privilege to speak at the Women's Health and Equality Queensland Forum on Understanding Pathways to Safety and Brisbane City Council was a lead sponsor of that event as well. You've raised issues today around gender equity and council has an inclusion strategy. We have a strong representation of female councillors in this place and we have a gender-balanced civic cabinet and I know that this is something that the Lord Mayor has really championed. As a mum to two young boys, I appreciate the importance of setting examples to young men. And I know that some councillors have also engaged with the Men's Walk and Talk Project, which tackles some of the issues that you have discussed. So finally, I just wanted to say thank you for being here today and also extend my thanks to White Ribbon and especially Communicare, who continues the work. I think most of us in these public roles know how difficult the work of charities can be and I'd like to commend you on the ongoing work and I look forward to meeting with you.
Thank you, councillor Cunningham. Thank you, Mr Ball. Thank you for coming in today. Councillors, I now draw attention to the next item on the agenda, question time. Are there any questions of the Lord Mayor or a civic cabinet chair of any of the standing committees? Councillor Hutton?
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, while we were required to temporarily pause ferry services on the Brisbane River during the recent rain, I understand that they'll be soon back up and running. Could you please update the chamber on the latest news on our ferry services?
Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Hutton, for the question and, yeah, we do have some exciting news that from Thursday, first service on Thursday, we will have our city cats back up and running and we will have 13 terminals activated in this new network. So it's a really important step forward to have city cats operating from 13 terminals plus the free city hopper and our kitty cat service as well operating. Now, I do believe that the reactivation of ferry services and in particular city cats on our river is a really important step when it comes to the symbolism of our city's recovery and it is one of those things that people love about our city. They love to see our fantastic city cats and ferry services and kitty cats and the river has been eerily quiet in recent times. It just doesn't seem like Brisbane when those city cats are not operating. So from Thursday, we will have 13 terminals up and running, services will run every 15 minutes and that will be a really important step, next step, in getting our city's recovery moving forward. Now, we still have eight terminals that have had a bit more substantial damage and need further repairs and so work will continue on that, but we thought it was really important to get what we could get up and running, activated as soon as possible. Now, let's compare this to 2011 because, you know, it's easy to forget with the passage of time and, you know, it's been 12 weeks since the floods and 12 weeks seems like a long time, but it was six months before the first ferry service was up and running in 2011, six months. And so to have services starting six weeks, six weeks after the flood, and that was the first tranche of services that we announced, the cross river services, and then to have 13 terminals activated 12 weeks after the flood is a fantastic thing. It is also an endorsement of the work that went in after 2011 to make our infrastructure more flood resilient. Now, it's funny because you do hear people saying, oh, I thought the ferry terminals were supposed to be floodproof. And we saw someone make that comment. Now, come in spinner. The terminals were built to be flood resilient, but I don't know about you, but when you've got tonnes of pontoons coming down a river, smashing into terminals, there's going to be a bit of damage. And the fact is, in 2011, we saw seven terminals destroyed completely, completely destroyed and had to be demolished and rebuilt. Seven terminals. And the cost of that in 2011 was $70 million. $70 million had to be put into rebuilding terminals. And so what we see now is a network of more resilient terminals that we've been invested in with the support of other levels of government so that now our network can get up and running sooner, six weeks, 12 weeks as opposed to six months. And the rebuilding process after 2011 actually took years. So we had temporary terminals in place, you'll remember, six months in, they were temporary terminals and then building the more flood resilient permanent terminals took years. So we are in a really good position with our river infrastructure. And let's not forget the Riverwalk, built by Labor, that floated away down the river and almost hit the Gateway Bridge, causing, you know, potentially a catastrophic failure if that had occurred. So we are in a much better position with our river infrastructure. Having said that, there are costs associated with getting that river infrastructure up and running. At this point in time, the cost estimation is in excess of 20 million will be need to be invested on ferry terminals and river infrastructure to get everything reactivated again. And so that includes the work that's been done to date, but also the work on those further eight terminals that needs to happen. Now, the other thing is, we obviously have insurance policies in place for key assets that can be insured and that includes the ferries themselves as well as other infrastructure that can be insured and so we'll obviously be continuing to work through that process. But I simply want to thank the Chair, councillor Murphy and his officers for the work they've done to get us up within 12 weeks.
Your time has expired. Further questions? Councillor Cassidy?
Thanks very much, Chair. My
Thanks very much, Chair. My question's to the Lord Mayor. Recently, you personally ordered a review into council's handling of the 2022 flood disaster that was completed by the Honourable Paul De Jersey. Of course, you charged rate payers $420,000 for this review, which took 27 business days to complete. So that's $16,000 a day for this review that you deliberately excluded residents from making submissions on, Lord Mayor. This review was clearly a PR exercise to make it look like you were taking action. But the fact that you set such a narrow scope and excluded residents from making submissions proves just how disingenuous it really was. You also did not consult directly with any state government agencies, disaster management or emergency services for this review. Only councillors and council were able to make submissions. With 20 LMP councillors and seven non-administration councillors, it's obvious the information that was given to the Honourable Paul De Jersey was skewed in the LMP's favour. Lord Mayor, why did you rig this review?
Lord Mayor.
I'll just take that interjection. Councillor Griffiths just said that the review may as well have been written by the LMP.
Oh, councillor Griffiths, please allow the answer to be heard.
I've got to say, you know, we have seen flashes during a time of serious catastrophe in our city of bipartisan cooperation. We have seen flashes of it. But you know what? It's pretty clear where the opposition is headed now. Because there is no gutter that they would not get into. There is no gutter that these people will not get into to push their political agenda, their party political agenda. And so let's be clear what has been claimed here. First of all, the state's chief law officer, chief law officer, and then governor, has been accused of participating willingly in a rigged review. Now, you can accuse us of whatever you like, but what you are doing here is accusing Paul De Jersey, the chief law officer and former governor of the state, of willingly participating in a rigged review. That's that's the depths that these people are now stooping to. This is an extraordinary, an extraordinary response to an independent review. Let me tell you exactly what's happened here. For the Labor Party's own political agenda, and that's the only thing they ever think about. They don't give a damn about the people of Brisbane. They think about their political agenda. Because they had decided that they would turn the flood into a political opportunity, they are now throwing their toys out of the cot that the independent review commended council for our response to the flood. They are throwing their toys out of the cot.
Councillor Cassidy.
They are accusing an independent, respected person, respected by all sides of politics, with the exception of Labor councillors, of willingly participating in a review that they claim was not independent. This is extraordinary. Look, I have two things to say. First of all, when it comes to the contracts and tendering that came through, Labor councillors know, because they sit here every week and see these reports coming through, that the amount approved is a maximum approved does not mean we'll actually spend that amount of money. We approve a budget up to this point, but time and time again, we do not spend that full amount. We 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 explain this week in, week week out. And so I can tell you that the total cost of the review was $60,000. In fact, $60,085. $60,000. But that is a side issue. The real issue is, I demand an apology, Mr Chair, from the leader of the opposition on behalf of Paul De Jersey, the most respected law officer in our state, someone respected by both sides of politics and a governor of the state.
Point of order to you, councillor Cassidy.
Yeah, thanks very much, Chair. I won't apologise, but I will ask you to bring the Lord Mayor back to the question. Why did he rig this review?
Councillor Cassidy, please, sit down. That's not, that's not a point of order. Sit down, councillor Cassidy. Why did he rig this review?
Sit down. The Lord Mayor is answering the question. Lord Mayor.
I demand an apology on behalf of Paul De Jersey. This is disgrace. This is extraordinary. And literally, I I I really have trouble believing my ears. Because whatever you can accuse us of, and we see misinformation week in, week out, we see, we see absolute deliberate attempts to misrepresent the facts. They throw that at us all the time, but to suggest that Paul De Jersey would willingly participate in a, and I quote, rigged review, that's their term, is outrageous, is absolutely outrageous. And councillor Cassidy should apologise.
Thank you. Further questions? Councillor Adamant.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee, councillor Howard. The Shrima Council has a strong track record in delivering access and inclusion upgrades around the city. Could you please update the chamber on the latest suite of works designed to increase participation for all Brisbane residents?
Councillor Howard.
Thank you, Chair, and through you, thank you to councillor Adamant and for your interest in this ongoing programme. It really is a great question as ensuring that everyone can access and enjoy the community facilities across our network, whether they are pools, libraries or sporting facilities, is just so important. Approximately 20% of the residents of Brisbane live with a disability, so it's important that works are undertaken to ensure that all residents can access and experience the great community facilities across our city. For some background, council launched the Brisbane Access and Inclusion Plan in 2011 to make Brisbane more accessible and inclusive of people of all abilities. The purpose of the Access and Inclusion Plan was to have an integrated, whole-of-council approach to provide better accessibility and inclusiveness outcomes across Brisbane for our residents. A lot of work has been undertaken since 2011, with council having invested more than $265 million into accessibility enhancements of our transport, services and facilities. Since 2011, through the line service 5.4.1.3 inclusive Brisbane Plan implementation, more than $27 million has been spent to make our community facilities more accessible and available for all residents to enjoy. In the context of our community facilities, typical accessible infrastructure works, they include such things as creating accessible car parking bays and safe drop-off zones, step-free access paths and improved building entrances, accessible and ambulance toilets and ramps, and improvements to general circulation to and from a building or facility. Recently completed upgrades to our community facilities network include upgrades at both the Bulymba Memorial Bowls and Community Club and the Mitchelton Sports Club. Both upgrades delivered new accessibility improvement works at their respective facilities, including both parking and amenities upgrades, along with the construction of access ramps to make these facilities more accessible. In terms of accessibility upgrades that are soon to be ready, accessibility improvements have been scheduled for both the Sangate and Corinda Bowls Clubs and also at the Langlands Memorial Pool. As an example, the Corinda Bowls Club, which is in the Tennyson Ward, accessibility upgrades will see a range of improvements undertaken at the facility, including the installation of accessible car parking spaces, new access paths and ramps to and from the bowling greens, the installation of new ambulance toilets in both male and female bathrooms, and new accessible stairs and access for greenkeeper machinery. In addition, the accessibility work scheduled for the Langlands Park Memorial Pool will also ensure greater access and inclusion outcomes for all visitors to the facility. The scope of work at Langlands Park includes an accessibility upgrade of the car parking bays and disabled maxi taxi drop-off bay, a new electronic-operated entry gate, an accessible ramp up to the pool concourse level, a new overhead gantry hoist for assisted sling-based access into the Learn to Swim Pool and a new accessible adult change facility, ensuring an end-to-end equitable user experience for those who need it. These are just a few examples of the types of works that have been undertaken across our community facilities network, with more than 50 accessibility projects having been delivered since 2018. Last year alone, the Shrima Council delivered $4.9 million in capital works relating to accessibility upgrades. This included upgrades at seven community leased facilities, two community halls and one pool across Brisbane. These upgrades to our community facilities are just so important as they reduce discrimination by providing people with disability an equitable experience and access to community spaces and activities. In addition, it allows our community lessees and operators the ability to welcome those who live with a disability to now visit and participate in their activities and experiences. These physical upgrades across our networks ensure that our city is inclusive of all ages, abilities and backgrounds, reducing social isolation and loneliness and giving all of the residents of Brisbane the opportunity to participate in all that Brisbane has to offer. While these physical examples of accessible infrastructure highlight the Shrima Council's commitment to a more safe, friendly and inclusive Brisbane, I think that it's also important to highlight the ongoing works of our access and inclusion team.
Your time has expired. Further questions? Councillor Cook.
Thank you, Mr Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, today is Idah Hobbit, the International Day Against Homophobia, Biophobia, Intersexism and Transphobia. It's a day Labor councillors always celebrate and together we always stand in support of Brisbane's LGBTQIA+ community. We are concerned, however, that you personally and your LMP administration does not support this community in our city. We know that you personally voted against a motion to support the legalization of same-sex marriage in 2016. In 2020, you refused to remove petitions containing hate speech about the LGBTQIA+ community from the Brisbane City Council website. In 2021, you personally made a homophobic slur against the leader of the opposition in this place. A few short months ago, you refused to condemn a school contract which openly and overtly discriminated against LGBTQIA+ students and teachers. Just last week, your LMP mates down in George Street unanimously supported a transphobic motion in Queensland Parliament. You stayed silent. Lord Mayor, you have had so many opportunities to demonstrate that you are an ally to the LGBTQIA+ community, but you have failed them every single time. As the leader of the largest city council in Australia, tell us what you have personally ever done to support the LGBTQIA+ community in our city.
Lord Mayor.
Well, I thought we'd scraped the bottom of the gutter with the last question, but you know what? They're going deeper. They're going deeper. Now, I'll tell you what we will never do. We won't gaslight the LGBTQ community in the way that we have seen just now. We won't gaslight them because you don't care about a community if you're quite happy to drive the wedge and divide and conquer. And that is exactly what they do. That is exactly what they try to do. Now, if you go out the front of City Hall today, you'll see the rainbow flag proudly flying. You'll see tonight the Story Bridge proudly lit up in rainbow colours. And you will see our ongoing and continuous support for Idah Hobbit Day and for our LGBTQ+ community. You will see that. And what you see from the opposition, as I said, is an attempt to gaslight and to divide and conquer. And that approach causes such hurt in a community that they claim to support, causes such hurt. It really does disappoint me that on a day when we should be united in support of this community, they are seeking to divide this chamber and they are seeking to gaslight our LGBTQ+ community. Now, councillor Cook, would want you to believe all of these terrible things about myself and my team. And she has, she has once again misrepresented the truth. Now, you'll remember in this chamber when the controversy around City Point and that contract came up. And she asked me a question, councillor Cook asked me a question about whether I support the contract. What did I say? Did I say, yeah, absolutely, I support the contract? No? No? I said, I do not. And I did not. And I repeated that publicly for anyone who asked for multiple media outlets, and I made it very clear. And we got the absolute right outcome in that situation because the contract was withdrawn, never to be seen again. And if it ever comes back up again, my position will be exactly the same. Yet what yet what councillor Cook and her Labor colleagues sought to do was misrepresent what happened in this chamber to try and tell the LGBTQ+ community that we didn't support them when supporting them was exactly what we did and what we do. Gaslighting, that's what it is. Gaslighting. And to choose this day...
Point of order, Mr Chair. Point of order to you, councillor Cook.
The Lord Mayor has repeatedly used the word gaslight after we've just had almost an hour of speeches about domestic and family violence.
Is there a point of order?
And just a couple of weeks ago, councillor Murphy jumped up and said, how dare the leader of the opposition use the word gaslight?
You haven't established a point of order, councillor Cook. Councillor Cook, please sit down. You haven't established a point of order.
Five times using the word gaslight.
Councillor Cook, you haven't established a point of order. Councillor, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Cook should know better, should know better than to seek to divide the community, to divide this chamber on a day like today. On a day like today. I think it says it all. It says it all about their agenda. It is grubby, it is dirty and it divides. See, she even tried to link me, Mr Chair, to something that happened in the state parliament, like I was there. Councillor Cook! Well, guess what? Guess what?
Councillor Cook, please.
You know what happens here? We are the leaders in Australia when it comes to inclusivity. Here, it happens here. And in fact, we are the most moderate Liberal government anywhere in the country. We are the teal, the original teal administration, right here. And we are proud. And we are proud of that. Because while some parties lurch to the left or to the right, we well and truly stay in the middle. We are moderate, we are inclusive, we are supportive, we always have been and we always will be.
Thank you. Further questions? Councillor Landers.
My question is to the Chair of the Transport Committee, councillor Murphy. Councillor Murphy, the Shrima Council's programme of Green Bridges is powering ahead, with both Kangaroo Point and Breakfast Creek making significant progress. Could you please update the chamber on the latest developments in the Green Bridges programme?
Councillor Murphy.
Well, thank you so much, councillor Landers, and it always gives me great pleasure to talk about the Shrima Council's teal agenda for the city of Brisbane. That starts with the Green Bridges programme. And Chair, many councils will have seen the announcement from the Lord Mayor that we are getting on with the job of building the Breakfast Creek Green Bridge. And I know that councillors McLaughlin and Howard are very important to see this critical connection through their wards. We're pleased to announce that this bridge will be delivered by the Giorgio Brady Joint Venture with construction to start very soon. Now, the Giorgio Brady Joint Venture is a Brisbane-based civil contractor comprising Giorgio Group and Brady Marine and Civil with more than 70 years of combined experience in delivering projects in Brisbane and the surrounding region. Another outstanding achievement of Lord Mayor Shrima's local buy policy. Now, the joint venture team's knowledge and experience is strengthened by Brady Marine's fleet of in-house specialised marine construction plant and equipment. And this will ensure certainty of delivery in the current high-demand, high-uncertainty procurement environment. Now, Giorgio Brady Joint Venture is locally based with offices in Fortitude Valley and Yatla, ensuring maximum benefit to South East Queensland when they are committed to sourcing and buying more than 90% of available goods and services from the local market for this bridge, including steel, concrete, balustrading, piling and landscaping. But wait, there's more, Chair. Around 16,000 hours of work on this project will be undertaken by apprentices and trainees. And delivery of the new Green Bridge will create up to 140 local jobs and supplier opportunities, opportunities, which will provide a much needed boost to our construction industry. Now, many councillors will know personnel at Giorgio Brady Joint Venture because they've worked with us on major projects before, having a proven track record of delivering award-winning infrastructure for our local residents, including the Indrapilly Riverwalk, the City Botanic Gardens Riverwalk, Green Kemp Road Corridor Upgrade and the Telegraph Road Corridor Upgrade Stage Two. Now, while you might think that the Breakfast Creek Bridge is a little cousin to the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge, I want to tell you Chair that it's no less impressive, okay? The bridge will be the fitting end to the super popular Laura's Bonnie Riverwalk, which the Labour Party opposed, and will be the active transport gateway to the Brisbane 2032 Olympic Village at Hamilton North Shore. It will be a striking bridge, Chair, which represents, respects, I should say, the historic Newstead Park and Newstead House. A bridge that will have a distinctive colour palette inspired by the leaves of the Moreton Bay fig, very fitting for the local area, as well as featuring interpretive signage and feature lighting. From the bridge, you'll be able to take in the river and the park with pause points at the southern and northern bridge approaches and a new plaza area and landing point in Newstead Park with new signage rest areas and drinking fountains. The Brekkie Creek Green Bridge is a testament to the work our engineers have done. Chair, the bridge will require 40 piles, one land pier at Newstead Park and one marine pier at Breakfast Creek. It will deliver 800 metres of combined bridge and riverwalk and cycleway. It will feature an arch 14 metres into the air. And it will be built with 320 tonnes of Australian steel. Very, very impressive if you ask me, Chair. Now, construction will start midway through 2022, with piling works expected to start in the second half of this year and the full bridge expected to open in 2024. Giorgio Brady Joint Venture will spend the next few months planning for construction activities, including undertaking surveys, works to relocate and locate existing utility services, finalising various construction management plans and of course setting up their site offices. Chair, this bridge will require work to be undertaken both from the Brisbane River and from Breakfast Creek. Marine construction zone will be established to provide safe working environment for the team and a navigational channel in Breakfast Creek of six to eight metres wide will be maintained throughout construction. Marine barges will facilitate some of the construction activities in Breakfast Creek throughout the project. Smaller vessels may also be used to transport workers to and from construction barges. As part of the project, council is also delivering a new two-way on-road cycle path from the bridge landing at Newstead Park along Breakfast Creek Road and Newstead Avenue and through to Newstead Terrace at Halford Street. Councillors, I'm really excited about this bridge, the second in our Lord Mayor's green bridges programme. I'm pleased to update the chamber and the community that council is getting on with the job of delivering the Breakfast Creek Green Bridge.
Thank you councillor Murphy. Your time has expired. councillor Sri.
Thanks Chair. My question's to the Mayor. Lord Mayor, the recent weather has obviously highlighted a lot of drainage issues across the city and there are quite a number of residents who I think are a little bit concerned at the moment that because of all the damage bill, there might be some cuts to the drainage budget or that some projects might get delayed. I'm thinking in particular projects like the Orden Shore Drainage Street, Orden Shore Street Drainage Project in Highgate Hill. These sorts of projects are not flashy big ticket items, but they're really important to local residents. And the fact that we haven't fixed up the drainage in some of these areas means that there's a lot of additional damage to other council infrastructure when we do have heavy rains. So stuff like roads and footpaths eroding and cracking. So I wonder if you could give us a bit more insight into how you prioritise and categorise some of these drainage projects, particularly in a context where we're likely to see more flooding and severe weather over the coming years? And whether you agree that putting a bit more funding into drainage projects might be a higher priority for the administration, considering everything that we've seen over the past few years?
Lord Mayor.
Through you, Mr Chair. Thank you for the question councillor Sri. Drainage is an interesting one because what we saw right across Brisbane is that areas that had really good drainage and areas that had not so good drainage, maybe old drainage dating back to the early days of the city flooded. Both areas that had good drainage and areas that had not so good drainage flooded. Drainage, like many simplistic solutions that you can put up, is not the one simple bullet, silver bullet. Drainage is one response amongst many that a city takes when it comes to our response to the changing climate, our response to weather events and floods, storms, tidal surges and a whole range of other challenges that we face. And so we know that, for example, the flood resilient homes programme, it originated out of this exact challenge that we had with drainage. Drainage projects are very expensive. By their nature, they involve various expensive underground works, they involve often resumptions of private property or at least taking easements underneath private property. And with the construction challenges at the moment, the cost just continues to go up and up and up. And in many cases, those very expensive drainage projects were benefiting a very small number of properties. And, you know, there is a place, there is a place for this. But we must, in a city with a finite budget, in a city that has flooding, in the recent flood of 23,000 properties, you won't solve that flooding with simply drainage responses. You won't solve that flooding. Even the issue of backflow valves, we've had a lot of debate about that. Backflow valves do not solve the problem of flooding. They can improve the situation, drainage can improve the situation, but drainage alone will not stop flooding. Even areas with fantastic drainage experience flooding recently. So we need to be really careful in not to give people a hope that there's a silver bullet. There's multiple responses that we need to be taking and drainage is one of them. So while not underselling the importance of drainage and it is important, but it has to be prioritised, it has to be good value for ratepayers' money and it has to also benefit, you know, a significant number of people as well. So these are the type of things that we look at when it comes to what might be in the upcoming budget. Councillor Sri, you don't have too much longer to wait. In a matter of weeks, you will find out. But we acknowledge that all councillors have had the opportunity to submit their budget submissions and provide feedback on what they'd like to see. And as always, we do take those into consideration. We will be investing more into drainage again in the coming year, but as I said, there is no one silver bullet. We'll be looking at a suite of responses that can help make Brisbane more flood resilient, more resilient to floods, but also more resilient to a changing climate.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Further questions? councillor Hammond.
Thank you, Mr Chair. My question is to the Chair of City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee, councillor Allen. Councillor Allen, the annual Botanica expedition, I've lost my tongue, I think. Expedition will soon kick off in 2022 with a major suite of exhibits in the city Botanic Parklands. Can you please update the chamber on what residents can expect in this year's programme?
Thank you. Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and thank you councillor Hammond for the question. Botanica is one of the city's biggest and most popular cultural events, one that we all look forward to every year. Now, in its fourth iteration, this event has gone from strength to strength, attracting some of Australia's leading contemporary artists and designers to exhibit at this unique open-air festival. Held right here in the heart of the city at the Botanic Gardens over 10 exciting nights from May 20th to the 29th, this isn't your ordinary art exhibition and just to let the chamber know that's starting this Friday. It's an immersive experience for people of all ages with activations and performances from local artists, nightly guided tours, a children's discovery trail and workshops. Backed by popular demand, we will have the Botanica Live Nights returning on Friday, Saturday and Sunday evenings, where you can enjoy live music and dance performances, food trucks and a pop-up bar to make the most of your evening. This year, we have partnered with the Museum of Brisbane to produce the upcoming programme. Following months of preparation, it's great to see some of our most talented artists come together after what's been a very challenging couple of years. Last year was hugely successful, attracting over 70,000 visitors over the 10 nights, having almost doubled from previous years. We can't wait to welcome the crowds back again this year. In Brisbane, we are fortunate to be in a position to experience this unique open-air exhibition that embraces and celebrates our fantastic outdoor lifestyle and vibrant nightlife, all here in one of the most beautiful and iconic locations in Brisbane. It's a terrific economic boost for the city, encouraging not only crowds of Brisbane locals but also a significant number of out-of-region visitors to the city to enjoy a night out. But events like this are more than just a cultural experience. They provide a platform for local creatives to showcase their talents and strengthen Brisbane's reputation as a cultural city with plenty to see and do for residents and visitors alike. This year's theme is focused on inspiring conversations and encouraging visitors to think about their relationship with the built, natural and digital environments. The installations play with colourful lighting and projections that interact with the Botanic Gardens landscape. It's a truly unique and immersive experience you have to see for yourself. The month of May is one of the busiest on Brisbane's events calendar. I'm sure most of you who have been out and about in the city have noticed some of the fantastic street art pop-ups around the place. And this, of course, is the annual Brisbane Street Art Festival. I was lucky to be at the opening night recently and the artists who are in attendance were certainly keen to get out and produce their projects. This festival is part of the Shriner Council's proudly sponsored events each year. We've been running this for some years now and it also continues to go from strength to strength. Once again, this is designed to try and encourage and support our fantastic local artists. It gives them an opportunity to showcase their capabilities across the city. From recollection, I think we had something like 50 projects taking place through this particular event. So we're also lucky to not only have these people in the city, we've, obviously, we're supporting our local artists, but this year after Covid, we've been fortunate to get some overseas artists to join us. The artists from the Street Art Festival will also be helping out with the Botanica Programme in an event called Scribble Slam. And Scribble Slam, if you didn't catch it last year, is a live street art battle between two artists where they create their artwork in real time in front of their Botanica audiences. So that's a real crowd pleaser, it's really popular, gets everybody gied up. So looking forward to that again. You know, we're just really excited to get this festival up and running again. The Shriner Council is obviously dedicated to supporting our arts sector. They have had a tough couple of years. This is a really great way to get the community out, to support the sector. I'd encourage all councillors in this chamber to take the opportunity to pop down over the period of the festival. And just in closing, I'd like to thank Craig Flood and his team for pulling this event together. Thank you.
Further questions? councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, in the wake of the recent flood review, it's clear your LMP administration has failed to deliver for Brisbane's suburbs. Following the 2011 floods, it was recommended that backflow valves be installed at 52 locations, but the LMP only installed them at 15. Some of those locations that missed out were significantly impacted by the 2022 floods. In my ward in Sandgate, there are three tidal valves that have been awaiting repair for around two years now. There are also hundreds of residents affected by flooding from outdated stormwater drainage across Brighton Deeg and Sandgate, Birrill and Zulmia and many other suburbs across the north side. Residents in Hemant have noticed flooding after light rain recently and have been calling for better drainage for years now. It's the same story for the Winter Manly Cricket Club in Tingalpa, who are forced to spend tens of thousands of dollars repairing their pitches because their fields flood so often. Since 2011, the LMP have spent $33.6 billion of ratepayers' money in successive council budgets. And you've spent just $185 million of that on stormwater drainage maintenance in a decade. That's 0.5% of the budget. Now, Lord Mayor, you didn't even blink an eye when you announced half a billion dollars on a handful of inner-city bridges, you even fast-tracked them, but you continue to neglect basic suburban infrastructure. Lord Mayor, will you delay your extra green bridges to fast-track suburban drainage in the upcoming budget?
Lord Mayor.
I think I already just answered this question because it was pretty much along the same lines as the councillor Sri one. But I will say, we see another snake oil salesman here who is promising that every problem in Brisbane can be fixed with some extra funding for drainage. I literally just talked about this issue here. Simplifying complex issues doesn't help anyone. Thinking that if only we did a bit more here, it'd solve every problem, won't help anyone. And so we need to take a balanced approach. We need to absolutely invest in all of the different things that make our city more resilient. But councillor Cassidy obviously underrates the intelligence of the average Brisbane resident in thinking that he can put out there politically motivated, simple messages that, you know, will hopefully get him and his team re-elected or elected at the next election. But people are smarter than that, just as they have been very smart at the last four or five elections. Because this kind of simplistic snake oil salesman approach does not help a city become more resilient. Brisbane is built on a floodplain. 60% of the CBD, where we stand right now, is in a floodzone. And there's large parts of the city that are in floodzones. Now, this administration didn't decide to put the city here, that decision was made by others before us. And there are many things that we can do to help make our city more resilient and that we are doing and that we have a proud record of. And I've got to say-
Point of order Chair.
Point of order to you.
Yeah, just on relevance, the Lord Mayor is talking a lot about the CBD in the city again, and that was my point. I asked him if he would delay his inner-city green bridges and invest in suburban drainage instead and perhaps you could talk about that.
Councillor Cassidy, it was a minute thirty question. The Lord Mayor has plenty of scope to answer the question as was put to him.
And so we know, we know that there's many things that can make our city more resilient. And we are focused on those things. As I said, it is, one of the, one of the most exciting things to come out of, I guess the silver lining of the cloud that we saw recently, was the fact that now we've got a federal and state government thinking about things like flood resilient homes, thinking about things like voluntary buyback. They weren't interested for decades. Decades. Literally, I think the state government basically decided they would build Wyvenhoe Dam and then do nothing else for 40 years.
Point of order Chair.
Point of order to you councillor Cassidy.
And now-
Sorry, Lord Mayor, point of order to councillor Cassidy.
Relevance, this question's about suburban drainage, not about the resilient homes package. It's an important package, but I'd ask you to draw the Lord Mayor back to the question about suburban drainage.
Lord Mayor, to the question pose please.
Thank you. And now, thanks to, in large part, the experience and advocacy of the Brisbane City Council, we've got all three levels of government on board with this record $741 million programme. It is fantastic.
Point of order Chair. The Lord Mayor is clearly just ignoring you now. You asked him to come back to the question, which is about suburban drainage, and he refuses.
Councillor Cassidy, you asked a very long question on all aspects of drainage. The Lord Mayor is answering the question. Lord Mayor, you have the floor.
So I was explaining why drainage is not the silver bullet to every solution and that there are other things. And there's great work being happening on those other things as well. So we can't just look at one thing, we've got to look at all of the things. We've got to look at the whole suite and that's exactly what we're doing. That's exactly what I'll be doing going forward. And thank you councillor Cassidy for your suggestion. I'll take that under advisement.
Thank you. Councillors, that ends question time. We now move on to the E and C report. Lord Mayor, Establishment and Coordination Committee report of the 9th of May 2022, please.
Mr Chair, I move that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday 10th of May 2022 be adopted.
Thank you. It's been moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by the Deputy Mayor that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting dated Monday 9th May 2022 be adopted. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Last night, City- Last night, City Hall, the Tropical Dome, Radcliffe Place and the Story Bridge, and Sandgate Town Hall, as well as Victoria Bridge, were lit up in the colour red to support National Volunteer Week. I particularly want to thank all of the volunteers, the countless volunteers in our community who contribute so much, and we've seen, obviously, just the most recent examples of the Brisbane and the Queensland spirit in action with the floods. Volunteers achieve so much, and the reality is, there's no city or state that has better, more dedicated volunteers than Queensland and Brisbane. Like, we have seen it time and time again. Our volunteers are literally world-class, and their spirit is unmatched by any other place in the world, I believe. And so sadly, they've had reasons for that spirit to be put to the test, whether it's the 2011 flood, whether it's storms, whether it's bushfires, whether it's the whole range of challenges, or whether it's just helping out in a local community organisation. Our volunteers are amazing, we say thank you, we pay tribute, and they achieve amazing things. Today, as I mentioned before, is Idaho Bird Day, and is something that council continues to support. And not just a support this year, not just a newfound support, but a support for years and years and years. Isn't that right, councillor Howard? We were, we were, as a Brisbane City Council, the first ever local government to be recognised as an LGBTI-inclusive workplace. First in Australia, we have led. And now councillor Cassidy or councillor Cook may go, oh, well, that was a previous Lord Mayor that achieved that. Well, who was the deputy mayor at the time? Maybe me. Who was a senior part of that team for the last fifteen-plus years? Me! And so I have continued to support, in every way that counts, our LGBTQ+ community, and it is disappointing that we see attempts to divide and attempts, as I said, to gaslight that community. It is grubby stuff, it is not, that's not what leaders do. They don't use these issues to divide people, and it is a shame that we see others who choose to take those tactics. We, look, I will point out something else, because it is important. Everyone will remember the tragic situation we had around Drag Queen Storytime in one of our council libraries. It was a truly tragic situation, it was tragic on so many different counts. This is a programme that had been ongoing in council for many years. This is a programme that was then politicised, unfortunately, and this is a programme that we continue to defend, we continue to defend, and happens on an ongoing basis even to this day. And so there are so many examples of what we do on a practical level to support inclusiveness in our community, to support our LGBTQ+ community. And it goes beyond, you know, the symbolic things of flying the flag, it goes down to the practical things as well. Just recently, we had the Big Gay Day, which Vicky Howard represented me at. I had accepted an invitation, but then unfortunately, at the last minute, I had to go to Sydney to meet with the IOC, it was on that weekend, with the John Coates farewell and the IOC meeting in Sydney. I was looking forward to going to the Big Gay Day, but Vicky Howard had all the fun without me. And council officers have also been recognised as their, for their contribution to inclusivity in the workplace on a national level, with David Mann, the founder of River City Pride, back in 2012, being named as the Out for Australia LGBTQ+ Role Model of the Year in 2017, and Andrea Canafake receiving the LGBTQ+ Executive Leadership Award from Pride and Diversity in 2019. And so every day, we work towards an inclusive community, we work towards an inclusive workforce, and we have achieved some incredible things. And so it is really sad that we see the Labor Opposition continuing to try and divide. I will move on, and tonight, obviously, at the City Hall and Sandgate Town Hall, so not Story Bridge, because we're lighting it up in rainbow colours, we are lighting up in blue and green. What do you get if you mix blue and green together? To you. We're lighting up in blue and green for Neurofibromatosis Awareness Month. This disease is a group of genetic disorders that cause tumours and form on nerve tissue. All over the world, important landmarks being lit up in support of this campaign, and we're happy to lend our support. Tomorrow night, our assets will be lit up in orange to support Wear Orange Wednesday, and this campaign supports our fantastic SES volunteers. Now, I mentioned the volunteers before, but there's a special kind of volunteer that goes above and beyond, and that is our SES volunteers, who genuinely have to put themselves in danger to support other people and to help other people. And so when you get storm damage and there's a hole in your roof, it's those SES volunteers that come and do the job, and they've been trained to do so. When there are people that unfortunately get trapped in floodwaters, it's the SES volunteers that come on the swift boats and do the rescue. When there are missing persons or criminal cases that require searches, it's the SES workers that go out and do those searches and sometimes find some grisly things out there that no one should have to see. So we support our SES workers, and it was great to have a meeting with the police minister, Mark Ryan, who's also responsible for SES, to talk about that ongoing support, and it was great to hear his encouraging words about what our council does to support the SES. As you know, unlike many other councils, we actually pay a bit of an allowance to our SES workers. They're not paid, and this is not, you know, a paid job, they would do it regardless, but we understand there's some expenses associated with being an SES worker, and we do provide them a payment each year, just as a thank you. It would never compensate them for the work that they do, but it is a thank you. We also provide a range of depots and equipment and support for our SES, which will continue wherever we're around. On Thursday night, the Tropical Dome and Victoria Bridge will be lit up in yellow to support the Cancer Council's biggest morning tea campaign, a fantastic campaign. On average, one Queenslander is diagnosed with cancer every twenty minutes, which is an incredibly high number. There's not too many of us that haven't been touched in some way by cancer, whether it's someone we love or someone in our family. Virtually everyone in the community is touched in some way by cancer. On Thursday night, Story Bridge and Radcliffe Place will be lit up in purple to support world inflammatory bowel disease awareness, also known as Crohn's disease, and unfortunately, more than a hundred thousand Australians are living with these lifelong incurable conditions. On Friday night, we'll be lighting up Story Bridge and the Tropical Dome in yellow for National Road Safety Week. We heard from Commissioner, former Commissioner Atkinson just before, about the amazing achievements that have been done in the field of road safety and reducing the road toll, and long may that be the case. And so we're obviously a big supporter of National Road Safety Week. This weekend, our assets will be lit up in blue and white for Panieri, but sadly, the festival has been postponed. So unfortunately, I had that difficult decision to make, and I think because of the uncertainty about weather conditions, you know, it's a big event, it costs a lot to put it on, there's a lot of organisation, and they made the decision to postpone at this stage. I understand, you know, we're all going to miss those honey puffs and all of the other great things that happen at Panieri, but the Panieri will rise again, I have no doubt. The final light-up of the week is for National Palliative Care Week, where City Hall and Sandgate Town Hall will be lit up in maroon to support this campaign. This year's theme is "It's Your Right", and it seeks to raise awareness about the rights of Australians to access high-quality palliative care when needed. This month is Small Business Month, and we do strive to be Australia's most small-business-friendly council, and that doesn't mean that the journey's over, that doesn't mean that the mission is accomplished, it means that we are determined to improve our support for small business in this city, and that is something we will continue to work on. We've invested significantly in a whole range of things that support small business, and that is things like direct fee waivers during the pandemic, and even recently with the turning the metres off, waiving of fees and rents that we did just recently, and over the past two years, but also the range of other things that we do to support small business in getting customers in the door.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
Move for extension, Susan.
It's been moved by the deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Landers that the Lord Mayor be granted an extension of time. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Things that get customers in the door for small business, and, you know, one perfect example, because it's fresh, is the NRL Magic Round, something that we actively support and have supported for years with funding, with funding, because why? It brings people to Brisbane, it brings visitors to Brisbane, it brings people into local businesses. And that is something fantastic, and that is just one of so many examples. There's not too many weeks where Brisbane Economic Development Agency and also Departments of Council are not introducing and supporting and financing initiatives that support business both directly and indirectly. So we will remain committed to being Australia's most small-business-friendly city. Recently, the deputy mayor signed off on the Queensland Government's Small Business Friendly Charter, and they, those things were things that, you know, many, most of them, if not all, were things that we were already doing, but we're part of now a statewide push to be more small-business-friendly, and that is something that I think is a fantastic thing. Item A is the Contracts and Tendering Report for March 2022, and thirty-nine out of the forty contracts have been awarded to companies in Brisbane or South East Queensland, which is ninety-seven point five percent of the contracts. There are also seven contracts within this report that relate to the flood recovery, including ferry terminal repair. I mentioned that the current cost estimate on that was in excess of twenty million. We have thirteen terminals that will be opened on Thursday, and then there's still eight that need to be repaired, and some of those repairs will be costly, and also the challenge is associated with the limited number of contractors that can do this work, and the super-hot construction market at the moment is, you know, obviously, an ongoing challenge. There's also contracts related to waste collection, we did, we've just been through Brisbane's biggest-ever clean-up exercise. Now, you know, normally, curbside collection takes a full year to go around the city. We did it in a matter of weeks, cleaned areas from more than a hundred suburbs, I think. There were a hundred and seventy-seven suburbs that were affected by flooding in some way, and the clean-up went to almost every one of those suburbs, and that was a significant effort. We had a fantastic response from the council staff on the ground, we had contractors involved, we had every spare available bit of equipment engaged, and the feedback from the community has been one of thanks and gratitude that council stepped up in the time of need to make sure that that material was off their curb. We've talked about it before, but having their life on the curbside in front of them, seeing that every day, is an incredibly devastating thing, and so it was important that we did this clean-up as quickly as possible, but the task was monumental across all of those suburbs, and the sheer tonnage of waste was just remarkable. It also includes contracts for evacuation centres and the New Jersey Independent Flood Review, Independent Flood Review. I mentioned that the Contracts and Tendering Report provides a ceiling for these contracts or a maximum, but that doesn't mean that we always spend that maximum. And so we go out to market, we provide an approval up to a certain amount, but there are countless times in this organisation where we don't spend that full amount for various reasons, and this was one of those reasons. Just over sixty thousand was invested, and in the discussions that I had following the release of the review with former Governor De Jersey, you know, this is someone who, in Australia and in Queensland, is amongst the most respected legal minds, but also respected on both sides of politics or all sides of politics. This is someone who could have charged thousands and thousands of dollars per hour for their expertise, and rightly so, because there are few people with such expertise, but that was not the case. This was something that was done in a much more affordable way than what it could have, and so our budget was based on what potentially could have been charged for a person of that experience. Yet Paul De Jersey basically reduced the rates because this was an important community response. So I want to thank him for his hard work, for his independent assessment of our flood response, and also for the fact that he was mindful of the budget as well. So it is something that I am grateful for. But, you know, a person of incredible experience, that is undisputed. In the financial year-to-date, there's been over four hundred and seventy contracts awarded to local companies, ninety-six point five percent of contracts, and that totals seven hundred and seventy million dollars awarded to companies within Brisbane or South East Queensland. So we'll continue our support for local business in that way as well, and get councillors to see the range of work that's happening. As these monthly Contracts and Tendering Reports come through, you'll see more evidence of the work on the flood recovery and the rebuilding process that will continue, and there will be more contracts awarded for that type of work. There's the initial response, but then there's the rebuilding phase, and we're now well and truly into that rebuilding phase, so we'll continue to focus on that going forward. Item B is seeking council approval to grant a lease to Clublinks to operate and maintain a new Manipi Golf Course. Now, this golf course had started construction, I think it was last year, and obviously, they've had some challenges of building a golf course in a low-lying area. Was it last year or the year before? And one that floods, mind you, and so obviously, they've been a little bit delayed with their earthworks. But having said that, having a new golf course online is something that is very exciting because it's the first new golf course in a very long time, decades, in fact. And we always wanted to see this golf course come to life because acknowledging that Victoria Park now ceases to be a golf course and has now become open to the public, fully accessible to the public, we're providing a second public golf course. So that adds to, that basically keeps the number of golf courses the same. But what we see here, though, and this proposal is far more than just a golf course, which is very exciting. And when we went out to the competitive market for operators for this golf course, we got a whole range of very, well, it was a very competitive process with a lot of tenderers, but the winning tender was incredible. And I would say that this situation or this contract that's been approved will see this new golf course become one of the much-loved venues for golfers in Brisbane, but also a venue, in some ways, like we saw at Victoria Park, where there's a lot of other things happening there as well as the golf. And so we'll see a fantastic outcome for this, it's a win for golfers, but it's also a win for the community who will get to experience a range of other activities on this public asset. So there'll be all types of things that are part of this proposal other than golf. I know it'll be, become a great hub for the community in that part of Brisbane, and I want to thank all tenderers for putting in their competitive bits, because it made sure that we got a better outcome in the end, that strong competition. So we'll see that contract going to Clublinks, P T Y L T D, and I commend them for that competitive tender approach. Item C relates to the appointment of a deputy chair of council. This item appoints councillor Peter Matic as the deputy chair of council. Councillor Kim Marks is taking a period of leave from council, and councillor Steve Toomey will step up as the acting chair of the City Standards Committee. And as councillor Toomey is acting chair, that creates a vacancy in the role of deputy chair of council, which will be filled by councillor Matic. And so thank you both to councillor Toomey and to councillor Matic for stepping up. Look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Further speakers? councillor Cassidy.
Thanks, Chair. I ask that item A be taken, Seri Adam, for voting at the outset, please.
A, Seri Adam for voting, thank you.
Yes, thanks. So starting with A, the Contracts and Tendering document before us today, it's business as usual under this LMP administration, with more than $150 million this month worth of work being contracted out. So of course, some work, we know and we accept, is specialised and has to be done by contractors. But in here, the real clangor... But in here, the real clangor this month is sixty-three million dollars being spent on the recruitment of temporary labour hire. Now, that's sixty-three million dollars of rate payers' money being spent supporting and promoting insecure temporary jobs. This money would be far better spent recruiting ongoing permanent in-house council jobs because our experience shows that these temporary labour hire jobs are being used to do ongoing council work. They're, they're being deployed to work alongside permanent, permanent workers, whether they're, whether they're in our quarries or in our aggregates and asphalt area or in our road repair area or footpath gangs. They are, they are being deployed to work alongside, alongside permanent in-house jobs. It's just that when these permanent in-house jobs disappear, they're being filled by temporary labour hire contractors. So we know what this LMP Lord Mayor's mission is here. That's in creating a more disposable workforce. There's no other reason to be doing this because it certainly costs rate payers more in the long run. When we see these contracts come through here in contracting out the management of contracting out, it beggars belief. Now, we know the Lord Mayor, today, he's obviously, being on the LMP State Council, he's obviously privy to that polling. And he's running a million miles an hour from the LMP brand in Brisbane at the moment, calling himself now a teal independent. He is, of course, no longer, he is, of course, part of the party. Oh, he says there's nothing new about that. I think there is because he is on the State Council of the LMP after all. He is in the party of Barnaby Joyce and Matt Canavan, of course, but he is running a million miles an hour. But he's no different. He's no different. He's no different chair to his mate Scomo down in Canberra. That's a name, Scott Morrison's a name that I want to mention up here at the moment, particularly in the seat of Brisbane and the seat of Ryan, and the seat of Lily, the seat of Griffith, of course. But he's just the same. He is just the same chair. When we see him contracting out this work and creating disposable, disposable workforce, he's obsessed with casualising Australia's workforce. He is an LMP politician through and through. He's no teal independent. He is yellow and blue to his core chair. We see eight million dollars being spent on the Story Bridge restoration works. This is a project, of course, that was going to cost rate payers eighty million dollars. The LMP tried to contract that out. They said the contractors couldn't do that work. They bought it in-house. And now somehow managed to oversee a fifty million dollar blowout on that project before it even went out to tender again. So just another one of this mayor's inner-city projects that he has completely mismanaged. This was, this was an essential project that needed to be done, but it's turned into a budget black hole. Now, if the LMP actually maintained our assets instead of blowing the budget on self-promotion, perhaps this bill chair wouldn't be so eye-watering. They failed to maintain the iconic mono-hole ferries. They ripped them from the water. They neglect community clubs. They're bulldozing community clubs. It's the same old story. It's the same old story everywhere across Brisbane, Chair. Nothing has changed. Residents certainly don't get value for money from this LMP administration. Now, we've seen in here as well, I don't remember the Lord Member, I missed it, talking about the contracts awarded to ProBuild. Now, this is a company that went into, so this is the contracts for March, of course, Chair. And this is a company that went into voluntary administration in February of 2022. So if this administration knew that this company went into voluntary administration, why are they being awarded contracts for, for public works? Certainly hope due diligence was carried out in assessing, assessing that and rate payers' money can be recovered from those companies if required. Contracts seventeen eighteen are particularly interesting. We see the Lord Mayor trying to, it seems to have figured out today, after many, many days of this being out in, in, in the public realm, trying to, trying to backpedal on the cost of this flood review that he personally set the terms of reference for, which were so narrow, so narrow that local residents couldn't make a submission unless it was via their local councillor. I'm not sure how many LMP councillors went out to the community, invited, and invited public comments and included them. I've called the file on those submissions. It hasn't been provided yet, of course. Of course, it hasn't. And he also specifically, specifically set the terms of reference that this, this review wouldn't consult directly with any key state government agencies. So certainly, he made a lot of comments about state government agencies when he did his press conference after the flood review was released. But it specifically prohibited those carrying out the flood review talking to state, key state government agencies, senior disaster management, emergency services personnel. So this, this review was rushed through when you have twenty LMP councillors making submissions, seven potentially making, not administration councillors making submissions. Of course, the information that was provided to the independent person is not independent, that information. It is skewed. So I certainly eagerly await those submissions to, to finally come after that request for record, that request for file was made several weeks ago. Item nineteen in the contracts is six hundred thousand dollars being paid to two community clubs for their work as emergency evacuation centres. And this is interesting because we had other community clubs willing and able to take people in for free during the height of those February floods. And we know LMP councillors attempted to shut them down. So why weren't those clubs reimbursed for their community work and in supporting the community and offering, and, and being offered support by this LMP administration instead of, instead of being, being harassed into closing down? We know that there are a large number of sites across Brisbane that are on the list for, for community evacuation centres. I think there's something like twenty. Two were chosen and were largely inaccessible for residents in my community and many communities around Brisbane on that, that weekend of February flooding. So we certainly need to see that addressed and more evacuation centres being set up and supported. And there's already two in my community that put their names forward, two organisations that have been sent through to the city resilience team. They're going to now work with them, but they, they've essentially been told they're on their own if they want to do this. The city resilience will give them advice, but, but certainly not support them in setting that up. And I think that's a policy approach that needs to fundamentally change. It's, it's, it's way out of touch to think that two evacuation centres is enough to service an entire city when one hundred and seventy-seven suburbs went underwater. On clause B, the Stores Board submission, the lease-in operation of the Manipi Golf Course. The Lord Mayor has said this is the first new public golf course in decades. Well, it's the first new one in seventy years. And there's a reason for that. This one, this one has turned into a financial black hole for this council. The argument that the LMP made in closing down Victoria Park as a golf course was that it wasn't popular. Its, its use was in terminal decline. It was losing money hand over fist. And council didn't want to continue to subsidise the operations of Victoria Park. But then fast forward a year later, and they say, we have to have a new public golf course because Victoria Park has been taken offline. So the LMP poured twenty million dollars in the Manipi Golf Course and council is expected to get six point eight million dollars back for this lease to this organisation, to this, to this leasing. I'm not sure that's great value for money. The Lord Mayor has extolled the values, the, the, the great value in his mind about this lease for the Manipi Park. But what he doesn't say, and of course, we're not allowed to talk about that because he has made that commercial in confidence, that it certainly wasn't the highest offer. And, and he said there's other things that went along with it.
Point of order, Mr Chair, claimed to be misrepresented.
Point of order, claimed to be misrepresented.
It certainly wasn't the highest offer. And he said, he explained that there are other things that went along with it, other community benefits. Well, that's, that is, that remains to be seen. And in the long term, over the next five, ten, twenty years of operation, there's no way of guaranteeing that broader community benefit will come through. Clause C is the appointment of deputy chair of council for councillor Matic. Congratulations on, on being elevated to this high office of, of deputy chair of council. We've certainly, in recent weeks, with recent weeks, we've seen councillor Matic attempt to use that rate payer-funded neuro-linguistic programming training in the, in the chamber in a, in a few speeches. I didn't know that he quite nailed it, but perhaps as deputy chair, when he sits up in your chair, when he sits up in your chair, chair, that NLP training will really shine through. I still don't quite understand what it is, but perhaps he'll be able to read our thoughts before we even verbalise them through that neuro-linguistic programme training. We will, of course, be supporting this item before us today.
Thanks, councillor Cassidy. Your time has expired. Lord Mayor, your point of misrepresentation.
Ah, yes. Councillor Cassidy claimed that I had made something commercial in confidence. That is a giant porky. I don't have the power to make anything commercial in confidence. That is done by the organisation up the road and the independent council officers. I don't make anything commercial in confidence.
Further speakers? Councillor Landers.
Mr Chair, I move that council now adjourn for afternoon tea for fifteen minutes, which commences only when all councils have vacated the chamber and the doors have been seconded.
Thank you. It's been moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Hutton that the meeting now adjourned for a period of fifteen minutes. It commences when councillors have vacated the chamber. All in favour, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. So, Miss Stone. Alicia, is it? Hi, welcome. Talking over the top of you for a turn out. Thank you, councillors. Further speakers on E and C report? Councillor Howard.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to speak on item B. And as the Lord Mayor has said, this is indeed another exciting milestone in the delivery of Brisbane's first public golf course in seventy years. And the first ever public golf course on the south side of Brisbane. While the tender was open, council received proposals from eleven entities, some of which offered to operate and maintain the site with no improvements. One which offered to provide council with their intellectual property for council to use. But this would require council to operate and maintain the facility whilst paying a fee for using their intellectual property. Another proposal offered to undertake maintenance only. And we had seven proposals that offered to operate and maintain the golf course with varying degrees of additional improvements. All proposals were thoroughly reviewed by council's rigorous procurement assessment process, which applied the following non-price-weighted evaluation criteria. Thirty-five percent weighting on their capability, thirty percent weighting on local benefit, twenty-five percent weighting on their track record and experience, and ten percent weighting on their capacity. This is what was used to undertake the initial shortlisting. And the item before us provides a comprehensive account of why seven of the proposals were not shortlisted. But Club Links clearly came out on top, achieving the highest value for money. Club Links demonstrated the most competitive capability, local benefit and track records far exceeding all other tenders. This contract will deliver millions of dollars in additional infrastructure on-site and provide millions of dollars in new jobs for locals and with more to see and do to make Brisbane of tomorrow even better than the Brisbane of today. In addition to operating and maintaining a world-class golf course, the new operator has a range of exciting plans to turn this into a major community hub for locals with a slate of additional activities planned to create even more to see and do for residents, including Sunday on the Green or Laser Tag, a similar initiative established at another Club Links golf course that attracts two hundred to three hundred people at each event. Barefoot putting, run-the-night golf with glow-in-the-dark markers, head torches and a special night safe course. Events such as outdoor cinemas are the perfect family-friendly event to engage with the local community. Outdoor group training sessions, pilates, yoga or running groups, foot golf, a new sport that's been taking golfers and non-golfers by storm, think soccer meets golf, and live music, food and beverages and so much more. All of this in addition to maintaining a world-class eighteen-hole golf course. So, Mr Chair, through you, it's a win for golfers, a win for Brisbane, and I commend item B to the chamber.
Thank you. Further speakers? Councillor Atwood.
Thank you, Chair.
Yep.
Yeah, sorry, I can hear you. Our assistive motion, sorry, on item B as well today, the lease-in operation of the Manipi Golf Course. I just quickly wanted to set the record straight on a few furfees that have been said today. One hundred percent council has not lost any money in the construction of this golf course. We have not spent a single cent. It is all being funded through the sale of the houses there. So I just wanted to make the record straight on that one. Also, the golf course was first proposed in nineteen ninety-one when the DA was came before council. But it took an LMP administration, and in particular councillor Ryan Murphy, to make this come to fruition. When he became the councillor in twenty twelve, he reignited this amazing opportunity for our community and has started construction in October twenty twenty. And for that, I'm very grateful. Sorry. Got a zootic from home. Anyways, it has been a long time coming. And with all the rain, it has been delayed a little while. But the opportunities that Club Links are set to provide for our community is phenomenal. Councillor Howard mentioned all of them. But yeah, the barefoot putting, the Sunday on the green, the live music, night golf, sounds absolutely phenomenal. I'm so, so excited to share this with my community. I know they are going to be ecstatic. And it also provides fourteen million to our community. And I think I'm going to leave it there. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any, any further speakers on E and C? No further speakers. We'll now put this to the vote. And we're voting A, Seri Adam. All in favour of item A, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. We now move items B and, oh, sorry, councillor Strunk.
Division.
Did you, okay. All right, there was a division called on item A, even though I'd heard no nos. So thank you. Our division has been called by councillor Strunk and councillor Cumming. Ayes to my right, nos to the left. Please close the bars. Class, please read the result, the result.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it. The voting being sixteen in favour, one against and four abstentions.
Thank you. Declare that item, item A carried. We now move, councillors, please to your seats. We now move to the votes on items B and C in the E and C report, B and C. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Thank you, councillors. We now move on. Deputy Mayor, Economic and Development, Economic Development and Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee report, please.
Mr Chair. Mr Chair, I move that the report of the Economic Development and Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee meeting held on Tuesday the tenth of May, twenty twenty-two be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It's been moved by the deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Hutton that the report of the Economic Development and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee meeting dated Tuesday, ten May, twenty twenty-two be adopted. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. First of all, the business, the Brisbane Business Hub Workshops and Mentoring Programme, what is on in the upcoming weeks, on the eighteenth of May, Think Big for Small Business mindset and leadership strategies that will grow your business. This is an interactive session to teach participants how to level up and grab their leadership roles with both hands, being presented by our partner expert Toby. At five o'clock on the eighteenth, Marvelous Women, Building Confidence and Vanquishing Doubt. This workshop is to celebrate and learn from the confidence of Marvelous Women, past and present, as represented in the Marvelous Women cards. So this is being presented by our partner expert Marvelous Women. And on the nineteenth, from five thirty to seven o'clock, on the couch with Neer Davison. A new guest on the couch. He shares his thoughts and experiences on diverse business journey and how he took his first business to new heights, achieving to start the first indoor skydiving location in Australia with iFly Australia. On the nineteenth at nine a.m., we have Grow and Activate Customer Communities on Facebook, being held by social mediaology and Australian community managers. On the twenty-fourth of the fifth, Four Secrets to Beat Work Overload, Reduce Stress and Increase Quality of Life. Anyone? Anyone like to join me on that workshop? A masterclass in how to stop trading time for money, providing a guided insight of four proven strategies to optimise your business and efficiency by ideas into business. And on the twenty-fifth at two p.m., Building Business Resilience with Sustainability, being presented by CCIQ on how to build business resilience by adopting sustainable practices across your business. Such great variety. I am sure you will have to book in for the on-the-couch with Neer Davison. But please make sure you are telling your constituents, councillors, about business in Brisbane. But please make sure you are telling your constituents, councillors, about businessinbrisbane.com.au and where they can visit the business hub, and maybe them too get a high-calibre mentor for their business. Last week's committee report was an update on the Brisbane 2032 Olympics and Paralympic Games, presented by the Host City Office Manager and Chief Planner, Di Currie. Just over 3,700 days to go until the games are here full steam. Games are here in full. But we are steaming ahead with our 10-year green and gold runway to deliver this once-in-a-lifetime event in Brisbane. This event, we know for Brisbane, is so much more than just a four-week sporting event. It's about leveraging the opportunity to showcase our incredible part of the world to a global audience, and deliver infrastructure that will continue to serve our city for decades to come. So we talked last week about OCOG being set up, which will be known as Brisbane 2032. As I think I've mentioned in this place before, BOCOG was the name of the Beijing OCOG. So Brisbane 2032 for our OCOG Organising Committee. And held its inaugural meeting on the 27th of April. The next one scheduled for soon. The first order of business was set up, the board, a small number of subcommittees, some critical activities that they'll be undertaking, with membership of those subcommittees identified based on the director's professional experience and corporate knowledge. The board will now move quickly into securing a CEO, which is the last step in what's been a lengthy process as we are moving forward as well. And although we know that Brisbane 2032 is the people that will be responsible for organising and delivering, there is an enormous amount of work to be done in the lead-up to ensure our city is in the best possible position. We are not the first Australian city to host games, we know that, but we do have a very large advantage of an extended lead time now into 2032. And we are very privileged to have been invited to become a member of the World Union of Olympic Cities, joining previous host cities and those that are on the path to hosting future games as well. So endorsed by the IOC, the World Union of Olympic Cities was founded in 2002. It is based when the Olympic Cities of Athens and Lausanne decided to create an association where cities can come together and share their insights and learnings on how to maximise benefits from involvement in hosting the games. So membership with association will give our council great access to invaluable tools and resources and connections with former and future host cities to learn the ropes on a hands-on approach. As the newest and 44th member of the WOC, I will be attending that anniversary next week, as we have discussed in chambers here, and participate in a range of workshops to discuss Olympic planning and legacy for Brisbane. There is a formal executive committee member with other members of the association, at which Brisbane will be formally welcomed as the newest member of the association. There are working sessions with other members to work through the Olympic Legacy objectives and activations, including initiatives involving sport and tourism and presentations by the IOC to report on the use of Olympic venues. So one of the great opportunities of being a part of this association is having the detailed reporting and tracking from other cities of pre- and post-game dealings with the venues once the games has concluded, and the legacy those games have passed down to the community. So we know from previous learnings that it's been a challenging task for some cities, which is effectively what led to the new norm approach adopted by the IOC and the successful bid by Brisbane, to ensure nothing will be constructed just for the games. It's already needed to cater for our growing community needs. So the mayors and deputy mayors will convene at Athens City Hall for the roundtable, and here I will be presenting on the projects and achievements of Brisbane City Council on our health and physical activity, and talk about what we're doing now and our vision for 2032 as well. As a host city for what will be the new model in the contemporary Olympic movement, I think we have a great responsibility and commitment to ensuring that Brisbane and our residents experience the benefits of hosting the greatest sporting events in the world, and I'll take the opportunity to pick some of the greatest minds there as well. I look forward to personally meeting with the Vice Mayor of Barcelona, a city which has been renowned for the urban renewal it has achieved after the 1992 Olympics, and the Vice Mayor of Paris, of course, the next Summer Olympics, but in particular to discuss their opening ceremony, which is being totally held on the river, not in a stadium. So some exciting things to be learnt from those one-on-one meetings as well. And I assure those in the chambers, I will be returning from Athens to share with you all of the experiences and learning shared with the other members of this association.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Further speakers? No further speakers. We'll now move the report. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Murphy, Transport Committee Report, please.
Thanks, Chair. I move that the report of the Transport Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 10th of May 2022 be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Murphy and seconded by councillor Landers that the report of the Transport Committee meeting dated Tuesday 10 May 2022 be adopted. Councillor Murphy.
Mr. Chair, before I get into last week's presentation, I want to just share a brief update on the status of our ferry services following the severe weather the other month, and, oh, last week I should say, and the flood event in February this year. Now, Chair, this Thursday, not only will ferries be back on the river, but the Lord Mayor has announced that two-thirds of terminals will be again serviced by an end-to-end Citycat, not our normal end-to-end service, but a modified service. Citycats will be running from North Shore Hamilton to Guyat Park every 15 minutes. And of course, we'll have the Cityhopper back as well, which will be running alongside the limited Tenerife Cross River Service, and that Cityhop will be running at a half-an-hour frequency. This is a great achievement for our city, getting back on our feet after the flood. Now, a reminder that in 2011, it took six months just to get back to a situation where we had temporary pontoons, so no permanent pontoons. We then undertook a almost-decade-long reconstruction programme to get terminals back in the river that were flood-resilient. And of course, in 2022, we'll be able to reactivate our river much faster as a result of that build, and indeed at much lower cost. So that is a great outcome. We'll be working over the next couple of days to just clear some of the remaining debris washed up in the last week at these terminals, and we hope to have services commencing from 5 a.m. on Thursday morning. Councillors, this week is National Road Safety Week, and there's two daily themes during this year's program which we want to touch on. The first is Friday's theme, which is Let's All Get Home Safe When Driving: Slow Down and Look Out for Pedestrians. And the second is Saturday's theme, which is Share the Road: Give Each Other the Space Needed to Be Safe. And I think, Chair, that these are very, very important messages for drivers, for walkers, and for riders. And I know many councillors in this chamber are getting involved in Road Safety Week, particularly when it comes to engaging with your local schools. And I just want to thank each of you for doing that in your own community. To our presentation, Chair, thankfully, our bus network remains unaffected by the recent weather, which is great news, as we know that in Brisbane, buses do most of the heavy lifting when it comes to our transport network. Last week, the committee was provided with a presentation on the process of bus stop design, which is a very important part of keeping our bus network safe and accessible. And I'd like to thank the officers for that presentation. But today, I'd like to update the chamber on the Brisbane Metro project, which we know is one of the largest transformations for public transport in our bus network. And as we see, Chair, this project taking shape across the city, the reality of this new public transport system is becoming even more exciting and transformative than I think we imagined many years ago when we embarked on this journey. With new internationally acclaimed vehicles, a new busway tunnel, new and upgraded stations, a state-of-the-art depot down at Rochdale, and countless public realm improvements, I'm always glad to have the opportunity to update the chamber on the game-changing Brisbane Metro. Firstly, Chair, to Adelaide Street and the Adelaide Street Tunnel. Now, this is one of the centrepieces of the project. This will create a dedicated link for metro and bus services to help alleviate our congested busway system and take pressure off the Queen Street Bus Tunnel. Works have been underway in the tunnel since last year, but I'm pleased to advise the chamber that we've now reached the 50% milestone in piling work. So residents will soon see, and chairs as they go into Brisbane Square, will soon see the switch to the other side of Adelaide Street so that we can install the remaining piles. The 225-metre-long tunnel will connect the existing busway network at King George Square Station, and last month, we hit yet another milestone in the project with work starting on the tunnel connection at King George Square. I'm sure those in the chamber have seen the newly-established worksite, which is just outside City Hall here. It's very hard to miss. Recently, commuters will have noticed that the works require the closure of the King George Square bus station entrance closest to City Hall, but the station does remain open and fully operational, with both platforms still accessible via entrances at Roma Street and the other side of King George Square. Of course, Chair, the other recent change on the Adelaide Street is the opening of our new Brisbane Metro Visitor Information Centre and Experience. Now, the centre features state-of-the-art technology in the virtual reality zone, augmented reality, a new scale model of the metro, and an opportunity to connect with members of the Brisbane Metro team. The centre is located in the old, at the location of the old Dandars store, just across from us here, across the street from City Hall, and adjacent to the King George Square Station entrance, both in close proximity to our existing worksites. It was great to have the Lord Mayor open the centre last week alongside Minister Fletcher, and I'd encourage residents to pop down during their lunch break or while they're waiting for a bus on Adelaide Street to learn more about the Brisbane Metro project. Important to note, Chair, that the Brisbane Metro Visitor Information Centre will become more and more important as the project progresses and we start to get into the heavy part of consultation with the new metro network later this year. Outside the CBD construction continues on the Metro Depot down at Rochdale, where earthworks are well underway. This site will not only be home to our fleet of 60 Hess Light Trams as part of Metro Project, but it will be home to many, many Transport for Brisbane staff in the new purposeful driver amenity area, administration offices, and a state-of-the-art electric vehicle workshop. Our first charging infrastructure has also been installed at Countess Street, so we've now turned our attention to the facility at Ernie's Roundabout, which is located along the busway Hurston. In the city south, locals will have already noticed early works have started at Buranda, where we are going to extend the platform, widen the tunnel under O'Keefe Street, and improve the connection between the road network and the busway, and there'll be some very important safety improvements that will take place there as well, that I know the local council has been talking to us about for some time. Mid-year, we will also start work on the Cultural Centre station, which will transform this station and the surrounding area. It will be the last worksite, Chair, that we do open, and it will continue, construction there will continue into 2024. The works around Gray, Melbourne, and Marybach Streets will not only improve the efficiency of the station itself, but they'll also revitalise the streetscape, provide upgraded walkways and cycling paths as well. To support these works, there will be some significant changes to traffic and the station itself, and I look forward to sharing a little bit more information about these works within the chamber in the coming weeks. And of course, Chair, I can't finish without mentioning possibly the biggest milestone in the project to date, the arrival of the pilot vehicle, the Hess Light Tram 25 into Brisbane. Our first metro vehicle has already taken to the busway to begin its rigorous testing process, and we'll now start to see this vehicle more regularly around the city as it gets put through its paces in the testing phase. When we talk about Brisbane Metro, we have to remember that the vehicles and the charging system are among the most advanced electric vehicle, it is amongst the most advanced electric vehicle worldwide, and definitely the first of its kind in Australia. The Hess Light Tram 25 is based off the best international technology, and we went through a lengthy design process to customise the vehicle for Australian standards and conditions. And I can say, Mr. Chair, it was certainly worth the wait. At 24 metres long, three-and-a-half metres tall, the dimensions of the vehicle are what allows it to carry a very impressive 150 passengers or 170 in event mode. The spacious interior has allowed us to maximise commuter comfort with three large accessibility bays for those in wheelchairs, luggage, storage, and racks, 64 seats, including 10 priority seats class-leading for a vehicle that council has in service, and of course, a fully low-floor and accessible design with panoramic windows that let the light shine in. Now, the vehicle's next generation interior is also packed with technology. There's driver-assistive technologies to make sure there's less of a workload burden on our drivers, powerful air conditioning, the equivalent of six domestic dwelling homes worth of air conditioning, so very powerful air conditioning units, Wi-Fi and charging hubs, ambient programmable LED lighting, an automated accessibility ramp, passenger information displays and screens, and next-stop announcements, a really critical piece for our customers as well. Of course, the vehicle is powered by two traction motors, each generating 190 kilowatts of energy and 2,500 nanometers of torque, and of course, the much-vaunted flash-charging technology, which can charge a vehicle in just six minutes, Chair. This, of course, this just means the council is continuing to deliver this very transformative project for the people of the city of Brisbane. We've hit some more milestones, Chair, and I look forward to updating the chamber as we hit a few more over the coming weeks and months ahead. Thank you.
Councillor Murphy, any debate? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. I was sure that councillor Murphy's going to say, but there's some steak knives thrown in as well with that vehicle, that vehicle that's not being built in Brisbane, of course. It's supporting jobs in Switzerland, as we know. I'm just rising to speak on the presentation about bus stop design, Chair, that was in the Transport Committee last week, and there was a very interesting discussion that ensued about bus stops out in Polara, about the service for Polara, the 126. Well, exactly what service in Polara, but Route 126. And there was a discussion around whether that could be provided with or without bus stops, and a question from councillor Owen to councillor Murphy about that, and councillor Murphy gave some information about that that's proven to be incorrect. Of course. He got it wrong, of course. And I've got a letter here that was written to councillor Murphy by the Minister for Transport and Main Roads. And in it, it says, Chair, that it came to the minister's attention that during the Brisbane City Council Transport Committee meeting last week, councillor Owen asked a question regarding the proposed Polara bus service and amended Route 126. You'll recall, of course, Chair, this discussion. And councillor Murphy, in his response, said the Translink had rejected a fourth business case prepared by Brisbane City Council, and he also said the Translink had previously provided in principle support to the deployment of temporary bus stops and subsequently changed that position, which was, of course, not correct. So Translink supported a second, not fourth, business case that had been presented by Brisbane City Council officers, and stands ready to implement those services subject to council providing bus stops. There's the key. There's the key. Council, council, as we hear all the time in this chamber, doesn't choose those routes, doesn't do that route plan, doesn't fund those routes, it's all Translink. The one thing, the one thing that council does and needs to do before that route, particularly this 126 route alteration, would be approved, is to build some bus stops. And that's what this presentation was all about. You would think, you would think that, you'd think included in that presentation, there would be some great news that new bus stops would be built out in Polara to ensure that that rapidly growing community would have services, basic services out in the suburbs. But of course, not. So Translink has said, and the minister has said, that Translink's always advocated for bus stops, not temporary bus stops, but permanent bus stops that comply with Australian law. Now, we are required, as council, we know, and we've been talking about this for years and years, that under the Commonwealth Government's Disability Standards for Accessible Public Transport Act, we must provide those stops that are accessible to people. Now, we've all seen those photos of what people are putting up with out in Polara. There's no curbing and channeling, there's barely roads out there, there's no footpaths, and of course, there's no bus stops. No bus stops, no library out there as well. No bus stops for people to be able to access these services. And then we see this administration and the local LMP councillor, councillor Angela Owen, going off to the community and saying, well, the big bad, state government won't give us a bus service, and it's all the state government's fault, but what we have here in black and white is that this route has been approved, this service will be implemented when council does its job. It would be, it would be running services from the 27th of June this year. If this LMP administration had actually, had actually just done its job. What they need to do is provide 17 new or upgraded bus stops. That's what we heard about last week, but apparently, this was one big fat omission from that presentation. They forgot all about poor old Polara again. So what I would like to do, Chair, just so, to ensure that this is on the public record, I'd like to table this letter from the Minister for Transport and Main Roads to councillor Murphy. So the facts are on the table in this matter.
So tabled, yeah. Any further debate? Councillor Murphy?
I've got the call.
Oh, sorry, councillor Swire, I didn't see you there. Councillor Swire?
Yeah, I'll have to wear something brighter and more eye-catching next time, and then maybe then you'll see. Yeah, no, thanks for the presentation the other week, councillor Murphy, it was really insightful. We had a good discussion about a few issues. One thing that we didn't quite have time to cover was just the fact that the design of certain bus shelters can often cause conflict with street trees. We sort of briefly touched on it, but it has been a source of some angst in the past in our neighbourhood, where there's not much space left for street trees on some of these busy roads. busy roads with all the other infrastructure we have to make room for. And a few years ago, in speaking with some of the council officers, I heard there were some alternative designs in the work for like non-standard bus shelters that could be situated and located so that they, they could, yeah, they could sit around the trees basically and trees wouldn't have to be removed. Still haven't seen any of them, so I, I saw a brief nod from councillor Murphy. I'd love to know if that's still something in the works, like, it shouldn't be that hard to design a bus shelter that can like fit around an existing large street tree so we don't just have to take the tree out. Yeah, it, it just strikes me as a, an example of one of these one-size-fits-all things where we have a standard bus shelter design and it always has to be like that, and we just can't for the life of us imagine some possible way that we could use a different style of bus shelter for the people reading the written transcript. I'm definitely being sarcastic here. But yeah, hopefully that's something we could hear a bit more about from in future or we could see a little bit of movement on that front because it, it really bugs me when council officers are proposing to remove a tree just to put in a shade shelter. That kind of undermines the purpose a little bit. And also just wanted to reiterate again on the record my previous mentioned concerns about how the, the advertising that's built into some of these bus shelters ends up taking up more space and the, the side of the shelter which juts out into the footpath ends up being quite large or quite wide, not only blocking visibility but kind of choking the width of the footpath, and it seems like that, that advertising actually ends up being a net negative because sure, we're getting a little bit of revenue for it, but we're compromising our streetscape design outcome significantly because we have this big bulky billboard tacked onto the side of a shelter, and then people can't fit past it easily. So again, seems to me like something that we ought to be re-investigating and asking, well, is this really worth the dollar value? These advertising billboards are not only unsightly and, and visual pollution, but they're also a physical impediment to people being able to move around and, and use footpaths safely. So hopefully in the future we can get some more bus shelters that aren't just a big advertising billboard with a roof on the side of it.
Thank you. Any further speakers? councillor Strunk?
Thank you, thank you, Chair. Listen, I, I want to speak on this, this item because, you know, councillor three, or three, Chair, councillor three, I would just love to have those bus shelters that you don't want in my ward.
Yes.
Honestly, sorry, it's on. No. Now, listen, I've been trying, I've been advocating for inbound bus stops to have shelters for, ever since I was, became councillor, at every budget, and I just keep getting the, the same old rhetoric in regards to, oh, we can't afford them, or they're just not appropriate because maybe there's not enough people using them, but honestly, this is the twenty-first century. Every bus stop, quite frankly, just not inbound ones, but every bus stop should have a shelter. If we're really serious about wanting people to take public transport, the heavy lifting transport in this city, right, which the Chair has just indicated.
Why don't you get a bus in the Olympics?
How about, how about, and exactly with the Olympics coming up as well, but how about all that money we're going to spend on green bridges, how about some of that money, right, to give us some twentieth-century, right, infrastructure, some shelters? Now, I've had, I've had bus stops that have been upgraded for accessibility, but would they give a shelter for the, for the person in the wheelchair or the person that's on a, on a, on a, on a frame to be able to stand out of the sun? No, no, not even inbound. And of course, we know our inbound bus stops, right, have the majority of people waiting for the longest time, right? So here's a challenge, transport chair, how about you put something in the budget for some more bus stops? There are hundreds, and we, we've had the figures, because I requested them some years ago, we have the figures of how many do not have a shelter. How, how about we spend some of that money on green bridges or some of that money that you're spending on the inner-city area, right, for legacy, right? How about we give it to the forgotten suburbs? Right? Because I tell you what, you don't gain any brownie points out my way. Every time we get a, a resident ring up, and I get at least a few a month, at least a few a month, that ring up and complain, so there's a lot more people that are not happy, that are having to wait twenty, fifteen or twenty minutes, even for the, even for the Buzzfeed service as well, having to wait for at least that, if not a half hour for a bus, and they're having to do it in full sun, right? Now, I, I think, I think councillor three should be very happy that most of his probably bus stops do have shelters, but guess where they are, in the inner-city area. And, and they should have them, quite frankly, but if he doesn't want some of those bus shelters, I can assure you, you know, release them from the concrete and bring them out to the Forest Lake Ward because we will definitely appreciate them out there, and, and it's really important that we do everything we can to get people on the buses, right, comfortably, waiting for the buses comfortably, and of course, some of the new ones that have been built in my ward in the last few years have the lights as well, which is really terrific for safety purposes as well. So let's get every bus stop up to the twenty-first century infrastructure that it should be and, and stop spending all this money on stuff that, quite frankly, my residents, especially the green bridges, it's a hot topic, I'll tell you right now. Why are you spending all that money on green bridges, Brisbane City Council? They ask me, and then I have to tell them that I'm not really in favour of spending all that money on green bridges where we have infrastructure that the suburbs need that's not being done. Thank you.
Thank you. Further debate? councillor Murphy?
Thanks, Chair, and thanks for the opportunity just to respond to some of the councillors, and I note that councillor Cassidy's leaving the chamber.
No, she's not.
Oh, no, he's just getting a drink. Sorry, it's first for me, Chair. Oh, okay, Chair. Well, look, let's first respond to councillor Strunk. So councillor Strunk, you know, wants, wants more bus stops in the city. Well, generally, Chair, we deliver more bus stops where we have more services to offer. And the reality is that in the decade between twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twelve, we've seen almost no growth funding from Translink or from state government.
Point of order, councillor Strunk.
Claim to be misrepresented.
I don't think you were mentioned, but, okay.
Well, well, Chair, what I heard quite clearly from councillor Strunk is that councillor Strunk was wanting Brisbane City Council to build more bus stops in our city, and I'm, 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 I'm super excited that he's excited about that. I'd love to deliver more bus stops, more bus shelters, but the reality is we would like to have more funding from the state to deliver more services. Why can't we deliver more services? Because this is the most indebted state in the Commonwealth, and we have an enormous debt problem. This Labour state government cannot manage money, and so inevitably they cannot invest in new bus services, which is why council, Chair, has had to step in with the Metro project in the first place. We've had over a decade with no investment in the busway network, with no, with no end in sight to the congestion that the commuter suffers on Victoria Bridge and in the busway on a daily basis in the morning, in the evening, and, and what is the state government's answer to that? Crickets, nothing, no project, it's cross-river rail, people will just get a train. Well, what if they're not near a train station? I don't know. Crickets from the state government in a decade. So that is why council is undertaking Metro, which is a project that you routinely attack and bag out in this chamber, that you've never had a nice thing to say about, but of course, that is the answer to improving bus services in our city, is Metro. And councillor Strunk, if you wanted to have more shelters, more stops for people to catch a bus at, then maybe you would support the project that will unlock the potential of our bus network in this city. Now, Chair, councillor Cassidy obviously had the letter from the minister's office. You'd be interested, interested to know that that letter, Chair, arrived shortly after question time the other week in this place where I answered a question from councillor Owen about services within Polara. And you know what? I've got to say, I don't watch a lot of state parliament, you know, to be honest, I, I almost never tune in to state parliament, I never read the hand side, but it was weird that, you know, within a couple of hours after answering that question in the chamber, I had a letter from minister Bailey talking about the comments that I had made in here. And I thought, isn't that funny that a minister is sort of watching what's going on in Brisbane City Council and, you know, really sort of obsessed with what's going on down here and who's answering the questions, but, you know, I don't know, maybe councillor Cassidy had something to do with it. I, I, I've got to say, I thought they were busy legislating down there in state parliament, not watching the goings-on of Brisbane City Council. But in any case, I'm glad you brought it up, councillor Cassidy, because it gives me an opportunity to correct the record about Polara. Now, in February twenty-twenty, that, this is how long, long this goes back, Chair, this is how long we've been talking about trying to get additional bus services in Polara, which is something that the local councillor, councillor Owen, has fought for, for a very long time. In February twenty-twenty, we submitted an initial draft of a business case developed for detailed investigation. Then in April twenty-twenty, we did site planning and visits, investigation of bus stops with TPO, development of a timetable and cost estimates. We submitted that business case to Translink in May twenty-twenty. Then Translink came back and said, oh, that's not supported because the, the cost is too great, can we do some workshops to talk about it again? And, and that included potential opportunities to extend or adjust seven routes, which was the one-two, the one-ten, the one-one-five, the one-one-seven, the one-one-eight, the one-three-five and the four-sixty, so, you know, let's, let's get it together and have a big pow-wow and talk about it. So we did that. Direction was received from Translink on its preferred Polara option, which was the extension of route one-one-seven. We then developed two options, which were then submitted to Translink again via business case, with TFB noting concerns with the one-one-seven option as not being sufficiently customer-focused enough. Then we got advice from Translink to further investigate alternatives, noting concerns with the one-one-seven outlined by Transport for Brisbane. This is now in April twenty-twenty-one, so, you know, time, time is moving on constantly, Chair. In July twenty-twenty-one, costings and timetable estimates for the following additional options were discussed with Translink, a longer extension of the one-one-seven into Polara, services from Polara to Heathwood and to Sunnybank, Griffith University busway. Essentially, it was, again, bringing a lot of other issues in, into the discussion around services in Polara, and then they asked us to do investigation and costing of a realigned one-two-six service via Altandy Station. We then submitted another business case for a realigned service for, for the one-two-six in August of twenty-twenty-one. Then another request from Translink came for two one-two-six extensions, one going to the Stocklands Estate and a second to Heath, Heathwood, and then finally, in November twenty-twenty-one, we submitted another revised business case with three options. So I don't know about you, councillor Cassidy, but I count one, two, three, four business cases. So this is the problem with sometimes minister Bailey's office, is he gets the wrong information from the bureaucracy, the wrong information potentially from Translink, I don't know, and then sends off a political letter. You know what? We don't need a political letter, all we want is bus services in Polara delivered. And if they landed on an option that wasn't, we need you to deliver seventeen bus stops, oh no, now we need you to deliver ten bus stops, oh no, we could get away with temporary bus stops, oh no, we want them to be permanent bus stops. If they just had a consistent position on bus services in Polara, Chair, then people would be riding on the bus today.
Thank you. You're claiming to be misrepresented, councillor Strunk?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I indicated, I didn't talk anything in regards to advocating for more bus stops, it was just the shelters. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Strunk. We now move to the vote on this report. All in favour, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. councillor Wines, Infrastructure Committee report, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the tenth of May, twenty-twenty-two be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Wines and seconded by councillor Hutton that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting dated Tuesday, ten May, twenty-twenty-two be adopted. councillor Wines?
Thank you, Mr Chair. Our report last week was in regards to the flood recovery, so the Infrastructure Committee has an oversight capacity for infrastructure management and asset management, and we had the asset manager come to see us, come present to us for what was the full forty-five minutes available to us. So we had an extended meeting where he was available to take questions and provide information to councillors about a whole range of, a whole range of matters. And as you can see from the report, it speaks to almost every class of asset we own in this city, everything from playgrounds to tea rooms at ferry stops, to major roads, to the entire road network, to bus stops and ferry facilities. It's the whole, it is, the report touches on a whole range of things, and I think it's important that councillors be made aware of the amount of work that has been going on by council officers to bring our public and community facilities back online, and there has been a great deal of those. It's important for councillors to keep in mind that this, that the cleanup and the recovery work from this most recent event will be the most expensive disaster in this city's history. It will be more expensive to this council by quite a way compared to the twenty-eleven flood. We're expecting three times more expensive to this council, and I think that it's important to outline the extent of the damage and the extent of the repair work, which is why I made a special point of providing, of providing, of bringing this report through here so that people are aware of what sorts of things did happen. So as we work through the report, it speaks to a whole range of damage to a whole range of classes. So in some instances, there was merely water through the roof of a tea room. Well, we've corrected that. You can see there was damage through our car parks, damage to ward offices, damage to environmental centres on the north and south side. So while people may identify the river, Inogre Creek, Kedron Brook and Oxley Creek as the principal flooding centres, there was damage as far as Boondle Environmental Centre and Carrawatha Environmental Centre. Both of those needed repair work to varying degrees. Now, that's at one end, at the, excuse me, at the other end is council's Brookalba Quarry, which is a key asset that informs and provides materials for our road base that we require for road resurfacing and new construction. The, the Brookalba Quarry right now has four gigalitres of water, or four billion litres of water in it, and it will take somewhere around six months to pump that out. That is a twenty-four metre deep lake in what was once our most important asset, a base-producing quarry. While some of the upper benches are still accessible, there will be much of the quarry inaccessible to our organisation for some time. There was damage to four thousand two hundred and eighty-two lights in parks, bikeways and roads, with over four thousand inspected and made safe. There was damage to seventy-seven parking metres with thirty needing replacement and twenty being repaired and operated by four April, and twenty-seven zones that had metres are now operational via the mobile phone app. Approximately two hundred and eighty-five kilometres of road were impacted, and there were seventy-eight roads requiring significant resurfacing repairs, and the resurfacing repairs will be completed over the coming months and years. We at the moment have a vehicle moving around the city that has the technology to determine the, what they call laminational, or the, the makeup of the levels of the road base, and it determines how much damage the water infiltration did to each of those levels and how much it has reduced the life of that asset and whether, and to what extent it needs to be replaced and when. And there are two machines that will be operating around the city through those areas to determine the length of life in those roads and when they will need to be replaced and how soon, and for most of them, there has been years of reduced life. So councillors should understand that when we resurface a road, we expect that road to last twenty years, the new road base and new road service lasts twenty years, but for water inundation and other unanticipated damage. Well, when you get a flood like this, it massively reduces the expected length of life in that asset and will, will bring forward costs that we had not anticipated to maintain these assets, particularly our road network and our footpath network to a standard that we would expect. There were seventeen thousand seventy-seven potholes repaired across a hundred and seventy-six suburbs by the twenty-fifth of March. There were twenty-six of thirty-one impacted, traffic signals were operational, and councils would hopefully recall that in the past in this place I've taken special mention to note that the ones that did take longer to correct were where the lantern itself, where the three lights was submerged. So not far from your own constituency, Mr Chair, at Whittup Street, then Land Street was another where it was the lanterns, not merely the TSB, not merely some of the, of the, the items that hold the lantern in the air, but the entirety of the asset was submerged. There are three bridges that have been damaged, Corringle Drive Bridge and Jinder Lee, which will have to be demolished and replaced. There was a hundred and eighty-one kilometres of constructed footpath impacted, and that survey work is ongoing. There have been two hundred and thirty-one onsite surveys of footpaths, and the response to those surveys and investigations is being prepared to ensure that our footpaths are in good condition and are continuing to be safe. There was more than three hundred square metres of mud removed from the Cultural Centre boardwalk alone, to be a reflection of how much mud and debris and sediment was across our footpath, boardwalk and bikeway network. There was three hundred and ninety-six kilometres of off-road bikeway in Brisbane, of which two hundred and thirty-five. There was three hundred and ninety six kilometres of off-road bikeway in Brisbane, of which two hundred and thirty five lineal kilometres were impacted and a hundred and seventy kilometres of which were cleaned by one April in preparation for school holidays. Familiar yourself and myself, Mr. Chair, Kedron Brook Bike Way has been one of the most significantly damaged ones. And there are multiple reaches that are damaged beyond recognition, damaged to the point where we will have to review how we return the bikeway and in what manner and in what manner we return the bridges and where. So Royal Parade at the boundary of councillor Hammond's Ward and myself, Wolverhampton, the Wolverhampton Crossing, which is in councillor Hammond's Ward. And then the work around Uxbridge Street, the Uxbridge Street connection, again in councillor Hammond's Ward. And there's also work required at Kalinga, which I actually think is in councillor Allen. It is yours, all right, excuse me. But it's all part of the lineal bikeway that is responded to there. Much of the comments, the report, I believe, is quite wide ranging. And I hope that it provides councillors with important information about the sorts of things that council has been doing to make sure that the life of the ordinary resident of Brisbane returns to normal as quickly as possible. One example is while many of our pools have been damaged, we've been able to get the secondary pools operational. So my own ward of Newmarket, the main pool is not available, but the secondary indoor pool is available. So while principal assets are damaged, the support assets are still okay and are able to provide some level of service. So I refer to the report, but the impact on community facilities, I don't think can be overstated and will be a matter of ongoing concern for, I hope, all councillors to ensure that our community facilities, our sporting clubs, get returned to normal as quickly as possible. Almost all clubs were playing, were back on their playing surfaces and enjoying the sport itself. But many clubhouses were not available and the support facilities were not available. So the report, as I say, is quite wide ranging. I look forward to meaningful and proportional contributions from other councillors and I support the report in front of us.
Thank you, councillor Wines. Is there any debate? Any debate? No? Thank you. We'll now put the report. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any to the contrary, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Allen, the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee report, please.
Mr. Chair, I move that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the tenth of May twenty twenty two, be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It's been moved by councillor Allen and seconded by councillor Hammond that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting dated Tuesday, ten May twenty twenty two, be adopted. Councillor Allen.
Chair, in last week's City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting, we received a presentation on the Art Force Programme and also the annual Art Force Awards for twenty twenty one. Art Force is the much-loved community art programme that enables local artists, no matter their age, background or artistic ability, to paint their original works on the traffic signal boxes around Brisbane, bringing some creative flair to otherwise dull pieces of infrastructure in our city. What once again started, or sorry, what started as an anti-graffiti programme just over twenty years ago has now grown into one of the city's most iconic and uniquely Brisbane art programmes. It's our very own drive-through art gallery. And at the awards presentation last week, during his speech, the Lord Mayor did mention that as he drives around the city and stops at traffic lights, he always has a bit of a lookout for the signal box artworks. And I guess, yeah, it does in fact, yeah. So it is certainly something that's worth keeping an eye out for and some of these are really eye-catching. Since the programme was initiated in nineteen ninety nine, close to twenty three hundred traffic signal boxes and sixty four enerjex transformers have been completed by over five thousand artists. And in the presentation that goes with the committee report today, there are some examples of those artworks. And council also has an Art Force section on the website, which once again covers some of these particular works. Recently, the programme was rebranded to create a new modern look and feel, which has again seen the programme grow in popularity by sharing these creative works on social media and facilitating a range of collaborations with well-known local artists and organisations. Most recently, we had the privilege to work with the creators of Bluey to paint one of the boxes outside Stafford State School in councillor Hammond's Ward. This is featured in the presentation. But this particular artworks has brought a lot of joy and fun to the local kids in the area. Certainly, it's become a little bit of one of those sort of Instagram locations where the kids get photographed in front of the box. And it's been a great addition to that particular intersection. And it was really great to hear from the team at Bluey and that they were really pleased to be invited to participate on that particular project. And you could sense they were really thrilled with their final production. So if you're on Stafford Road at any time, keep a lookout for that one. Four triple Z have just run their local radio competition to paint the box outside their radio station in Fortitude Valley. And that work will take place over the coming weeks. As I mentioned, there was an Art Force Awards evening last month. The Lord Mayor, Lady Meris and a number of the councillors were present at those awards. And there are a range of categories recognised in those particular awards. It was a really good night, very, very positive, very good turnout from the artists and their supporters. And certainly it showed the strength and support for this particular programme. There were more than thirty five hundred votes cast by the public to decide the winners of the nine categories. And once again, it would be fair to say that that just shows the support and enthusiasm with which the community has engaged with this programme. So in conclusion, congratulations to all the winners. It is a terrific programme. It brings a lot of colour and joy to our city and it's one that we will support into the future. I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you. Further debate, councillor Strunk?
Thank you, Chair. Listen, I just want to speak in regards to the presentation. It was interesting in regards to what we were being told because I probably, like a lot of other councillors, we see those art kits dropped off to our ward offices, you know, the ones with the wheels and everything. And the artists come in and collect them and then bring them back. And I probably get one of those kits in about at least twice a month, if not a little bit more than that. And, but I didn't know how, I didn't know the process in regards to how those boxes get identified and the artwork is created and all that, which we were told, which was terrific. I did bring up the issue in regards to, I know when the kit goes, but I don't know which box gets done in my ward. So I did suggest maybe the councillors are told where those boxes are going to be. And maybe we can then promote them through our social media once they're done as well, which elevates the artist's work because they do remain, the intellectual property remains with the artist, which I was very glad to hear, by the way. I thought that was a terrific thing that council does, give them the canvas, but they're able to retain their artwork for other purposes. So just like to thank for the, thanks, thank for the presentation. And I look forward to maybe that, a little policy being adopted so that councillors can find out where those boxes are going to be done. So we can have a look at the new artwork that's showing up in our awards. Thank you, Chair.
Thanks, councillor Strunk. Any further debate? Councillor Allen? We now move to the vote on this report. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillor Davis, Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee report, please.
Mr. Chair, I move that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting held Tuesday, ten May twenty twenty two, be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It's been moved by councillor Davis and seconded by councillor Mackay that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting dated Tuesday, ten May twenty twenty two, be adopted. Councillor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, the committee meeting last week was a presentation on skate parks and scooter tracks. Council currently provides forty skate park facilities across the city, designed for non-motorised bicycles and scooters, as well as skateboards, rollerblades and roller skates. Each facility is different, catering to a wide variety of users and skill levels. We consider who the desired target user is, along with the opportunities and constraints that each site has. But, Mr. Chair, as we saw last week, we are only limited by our own imaginations in the design. Facilities can include elements such as a skateboard, skills tracks, learn-to-ride tracks and dirt pump tracks, just to name a few. The committee got a real feel of some of the recently completed projects through drone footage, with one video taken from the point of view of a skateboarder riding the facilities. And that was in councillor Cummings' ward. And some of us, I think in the room, had a little bit of motion sickness, so may not have been great skateboarders in their youth. The three recently completed projects featured in the presentation were Ed Devonport Rotary Park in Lotha, the Common Park Cooperoo, Shan Street Park in Stafford, in my ward. The existing skate facility at Ed Devonport Rotary Park was identified as requiring significant repairs to ensure its longevity. The upgrade was completed in April twenty twenty two and included a new ramp and skate transition options with wide plaza steps for easy access from the footpath to the skate park. It also included moving the basketball practice court further into the park and a new seat and water fountain. The Cooperoo Common Scooter Track was built with a vision to create a track suitable for multiple ages while complementing the adjoining skate facility. The track was carefully positioned in an underutilised area of the park so as not to encroach on the existing kickabout space or to interrupt the existing pathway network. And it's partially integrated in an existing grove of trees so that it provides shade for riders and is designed also for flood resilience. And I hear councillor Cunningham that it is a huge hit in your ward and that lots of the youngsters are often seen down there at that facility. At Shan Street Park, we improved the servicing around the existing skate half-pipe. The project also included construction of a new bike skills loop track and new pathway that links to the existing bikeway. There's also a new picnic shelter at the basketball court and an extension to the car park to provide additional parking spaces. Mr. Chair, along with an upgrade to Booker Place Park, Val Bowery, to be completed in June twenty twenty two, we also have four new facilities that will be completed this year at Paul Conti Park, Hemet, Watonga Park, The Gap, Kathleen Street Park, Richlands and Shaftesbury Street Park in Taragindi. Item B was a petition with forty seven signatures requesting that council install a dog-off-leash area within the city Botanic Gardens. Mr. Chair, Botanic Gardens or arboretums are developed and used specifically for the collection, cultivation and display of a wide range of plants for the purpose of scientific research, conservation, public learning and of course enjoyment. And therefore, dog-off-leash areas are not recommended for embellishment for this type of park. And so due to those reasons, the committee supported the recommendation not to install a dog-off-leash area at this time. And I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you, councillor Davis. Is there any debate? Councillor Sri?
Thanks, Chair. I wasn't able to get to that particular committee presentation. I would have been quite interested in it. I wanted to speak briefly about the lack of skate parks within the Gabber Ward. As councillors might be aware, the Gabber Ward is one of the youngest electorates in the city. The only skateable facilities we have are a very, very small, it's not really even a bowl. The council workers describe it as a skate spot. It's about five metres by five metres. It's been there for about twenty years in Raymond Park in Kangaroo Point. It doesn't get, it gets a bit of use considering its size, but doesn't get a huge amount of use given that it's quite limited in terms of what you can do with it. And the other facility is a, it's a multi-purpose plaza. The council officers technically couldn't call it a skate facility, but it's a kind of multi-purpose games area that does have some skateable elements in Davies Park, West End. Again, it's a very small facility that's mostly used by younger children and kids with scooters, et cetera. But, yeah, it's a bit of a problem that in the entire ward of the Gabber Ward, we don't have any dedicated skate park. As I said, it's a very young population, a lot of teenagers, a lot of young adults, a lot of kids. And I've been quite frustrated and disappointed both with the council administration and with some of the council officers because every six months or so, I'll write in and request again, hey, we really need a skate park. We'd hear some locations we recommend. And consistently, the advice is, oh, but there's already a skate park at Paddington. That's pretty close, isn't it? It's on the other side of the river and it's not a particularly accessible location for people in West End or Woolongaba because not only do you have to cross the river, but you have to cross quite a few very busy intersections. And as we all know, that inner city area is not really a safe place for smaller kids to be travelling across suburbs by themselves necessarily. And so while in the outer burbs, I think there's a bit of a sense of, oh, if kids have to ride their bike a couple of suburbs over to access a skate or BMX facility, maybe that's not the end of the world. Certainly in the inner city where there are some really busy road corridors like Coronation Drive and Waterworks Road and all the Montague Road, it's not really satisfactory to say, oh, well, the nearest skate park is a couple of k's away, so you could just go there. I've been repeatedly offering to allocate money from my suburban enhancement fund budget and saying, look, I'm happy to spend my discretionary budget to help deliver a skate facility. But there seems to be a bit of a, I don't know whether the failure is within the community facilities team or within news, but it's almost as though the two teams aren't talking properly to each other. Everyone keeps referring circularly to this existing strategy that says, oh, here's where our skate parks go. And I'm like, no, no, we need a new skate park for the inner south side. And then they say, well, let's refer that back to the skate team. And then they're like, oh, well, there's no proposal for a new skate park on the inner south side. And then I say, well, we need a new skate park for the inner south side. And then they say, well, let's look back at the strategy, let's talk to the skate team. And the skate team says, oh, there's no current proposal for a new skate park on the inner south side. And then I say, well, can we maybe look at getting a skate facility for the inner south side for West End or South Brisbane? And they say, well, let's refer it to the skates team. And the skate team comes back and says, well, there's no proposal for a new skate.
Point of order, Chair. Point of order, councillor.
We get the picture.
Thanks. I hope you do because it's been really frustrating for me for the last few years when I've been saying, I'm willing to allocate the funding. And I don't know if it's bloody mindedness or incompetence or deliberate political obstructionism, but for some reason, the public servants simply won't agree to any of the suggestions we've put forward as locations for a possible skate park. We've proposed converting an underused car parking area in Ollie Park, West End into a skate facility.
Councillor, come in, please.
We've proposed converting an underutilised area of lawn along Riverside Drive, which doesn't have any obstructions, although it is quite low and flood prone. We've proposed converting an underused area of parking along Riverside Drive, which again would be a relatively good location because it's a long way from any residential homes. But each time we propose a location, the administration seems to send me around in circles. We never get anywhere. And I guess my appeal through you, Chair, to councillor Davies is, can you please ask your officers to look at this again? And maybe if necessary, we can have a meeting about it, but it really is quite exasperating. Every now and then someone will come back and say, oh, councillor Sri, have you thought about this site? And I'll say, yeah, yeah, I suggested that three times. The planning team turned it down because it was too close to residential homes. So I understand that, but I also think it seems like there's a lot of butt passing happening within the different teams, but also a failure to think rationally about how the inner city operates. Because we've got nightclubs and really noisy bars and, you know, six thirty AM construction sites and a concrete factory, all of these really noisy land uses within a couple of metres of residential homes. Like the Hanson Concrete Factory is a huge noisy industrial land use. And you can hear it from the nearest apartments that are just a block away. So apparently, it's okay to have a concrete processing plant close to residential homes, but we can't have a skate park close to residential homes. And I think that that double standard is starting to look a little silly and a bit frustrating. I'm not saying we need to put a skate park right under someone's bedroom window, but the general rules that apply in city plan are probably adapted to suburban environments where there's more space to play with. And the blunt reality is that council officers, and I think particularly the news team, are going to have to accept that to get a skate facility into the inner south side, we might have to put it a bit closer to land that's zoned for residential development, even if there aren't currently any residential land uses on that site. So in particular, there's quite a few spots along Riverside Drive, quite a few spots around West End and South Brisbane where we could fit a skate park, but there needs to be a more flexible approach to the kind of rigid guidelines, which I think are only advisory, so maybe they're not that rigid. But I really hope the Chair would, yeah, would ask her officers to get back to me on this because I've... this, because I, yeah, I, I feel like I've been trying to work constructively with the administration for six years on this now. I'm not even asking for funding or money for it. I know the LNP won't put money towards a facility like that in, in my ward. I'm just asking for news to support a location, and it's, it's really, really tiring and frustrating when I've got young people coming up to me constantly saying, John, we just want somewhere to skate, we're sick of skating on the road, we're sick of skating in the Coles Car Park. We don't feel, it, it's an unreasonable thing to want a skate facility in a local area when, to be honest, they have relatively constrained access to other facilities considering the population size. And I just feel like the council really isn't hearing that need. There was a petition, I think it had close to 10,000 signatures for a skate facility. That is a lot. I said that was a lot too. I was like, whoa, how the heck did they get that many signatures? And the response was just like, oh, there's nowhere to put one. And it was, I think, a really demoralising and disappointing experience for a lot of those young people who went to the trouble of collecting petition signatures and were just sort of dismissed offhand with this response of, oh, we don't have a suitable location, or go to Paddington was basically the thrust of it. And as I'm sure councillor Maddick and councillor Howard will attest, the Paddington skate park's already pretty busy, it's getting lots of use there. Saying to the entire, you know, skating population of West End and Woolongaba and Kangaroo Point and Highgate Hill and South Bank and Dutton Park, that they should all also go to Paddington isn't really a satisfactory option. And, and I think as a result, we're seeing people skating in other areas where they're then coming into conflict with other public space users. And I, I do occasionally hear of issues in South Bank where people are skating on infrastructure that maybe wasn't designed to be skated on because they've got nowhere else to skate. So there's an obvious need here that the council is failing to meet. I, as local councillor, am trying to work with the administration and, and really feeling like I'm running up against brick walls. So it's just a genuine heartfelt appeal. Can, can someone in the council bureaucracy please sort this out? Because I'm, I'm really quite tired of making phone calls and sending emails and being given the runaround for what should be a pretty straightforward and simple facility. When I got elected six years ago, I did not think getting a skate park in West End was going to be this much difficulty. But I have to say that the administration has really made it very, very difficult for no obvious reason. And so, yeah, I hope, I hope councillor Davies will, will do something differently and maybe we'll see a, a new and better outcome this time round as compared to previous chairs.
Okay. Is there any further debate?
Yes.
Councillor Cumming.
Well, that was a tale of woe, wasn't it? Now, but it was a, I, I want to tell you, I've got two skate parks. One in the north and one in the south. And, but none of them, but you're right, none of them being paid out of capital from the administration. They had to come out of the, you know, the park's upgrade money and everything. But the CPO did quite a decent job, sort of thing. I've always found if you can't get any sense out of bureaucrats, if you write the CEO, he'll, he'll often be able to point them in the right direction. But anyway, I assume you've already done that. And then the one in the southern end of the electorate is paid for by the federal government, so good on the federal government too. So you mustn't have a nice federal member there. You haven't got anyone, you haven't got anyone in the government to do it, sorry. Yeah. You've got a poor old battling labour federal member. Yeah, and it'll be even worse if you end up with a green, I'll say that much. No, sorry. And yeah, so it's good to have a skate facility in the northern end of the electorate and in the southern end of the electorate, and it's good for the local kids. But the other thing I can concern about is sort of delays in getting repairs done to parks, infrastructure. There's a Ropley Road Park in my ward, and in fact, it was drawn to my attention recently, a fellow had come to see me about six months ago, and I said, yeah, righto, we'll get this fixed and everything, and nothing's happened. And now he's written off to, to the federal member and said, there's nothing, nothing been happening here, and the federal member's written to me. So, you know, it's, it's, it's good that he knows, anyhow, that's the LNP that's letting him down, and that's why he's blaming the federal member. So, but there is work required to be on Ropley Road Parks. I'm just putting in councillor Davies, if you could have a look at that, please. It's one of those old fashioned multi-sports things. I think before the flash ones that they put in councillor Murphy's ward, where they had these old fashioned ones and they had basketball courts and footsoal courts, the sort of thing. But they're all, unfortunately, the basketball hoops are damaged, the footsoals uneven surface and everything like that, so I'd really need some work done on it before it's, before it's usable. So if you could have a look at that, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Strunk.
Oh, thank you.
This is a, this is a hot topic today.
I'll try to keep it upbeat so it doesn't go, you know, woeful. Anyway, anyways, listen, I, I have spoken in regards to the skate or the scooter park that's coming into, into my ward in the Richlands area. There was a great consultation, a community consultation, yeah, great community consultation. And the officer that undertook that was quite impressed with the locals and, and the suggestions they had for, for the various designs that he, that, that, that these scooter parks can be. But I just want to touch briefly on, I had the occasion to talk to a resident at a pre-poll on Saturday for our federal member, Farxley, Milton Dick. And, and she was a young mum, probably, well, I say young, everyone's pretty much young at my age now, but she is probably, probably mid-30s. Well, I'm talking about myself. Anyways. Anyways, she, she said to me, and it was quite right, she said, listen, council does a really good job with park infrastructure, she didn't say infrastructure, but playground equipment, right, for the young ones, right? You know, kids under the age of 10 probably, pretty much. And, and they do some really, they do some really great stuff. And, and I totally agree with her, of course, but she says, well, what about the teenagers? She says, I've got a couple budding teenagers, and they'd love to have a skate park in the local park where I, where she lives, which is up Centennial Way. We have a really good skate park, councillor Sri down, it's got the biggest, deepest bowl in Brisbane, actually, at Anala. And, but she said, listen, it's a long distance to go, especially with pre, with young teens to go all the way from one end of the electorate to the other, because they'd really actually have to take two buses to get there unless she's, unless they're driven by mum and dad. But anyways, and I said, well, but apart from the skate park, because I don't think that park that you're talking about is quite big enough for a skate park. But it got me thinking, you know, we really don't do enough for teenagers. And apart from BMX and skate parks and, and I had, I had a little bit of equipment put in, in Hancock Park five years ago, because we had an old fort which didn't comply anymore with council's requirements, so that was taken away. And that's where the teenage, a lot of teenagers up in Pine Village used to congregate, you know, and have a, have a chin wag. So we put something to replace that once the fort went. But it wasn't, it wasn't the fort anymore, so they didn't really use it much. But anyways, but it just got me thinking when she mentioned that again, that we really don't do a lot with looking after the, you know, the, the teenagers, right? Basically, not the older teenagers, but the teenagers, you know, say, say from 12 to, 12 to 14 or 15. So I, I just encourage councillor Davies to maybe go to some of the council officers, the council officers you deal with, do the procurement or look at procurement and see if there's, see if we can't find something somewhere or a range of products somewhere that can actually service that part of our community, right? In a, in a, in a substantial way if possible, because I think we really have to try to cater for the youth in our community as much as we can and, and give them, give them those facilities that they, they require until they're probably old enough not to, not to need it anymore until they have their own kids. So anyways, I just wanted to say those few words in regard, on behalf of that resident and see what we can come up with. Thank you.
Thank you Chair. I move the report of the City Standards Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 10th of May 2022 be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It's been moved by councillor Toomey, seconded by councillor Landers. The report of the City Standards Committee meeting dated Tuesday 10th of May 2022 be adopted.
Thank you Chair, and I thank councillor Landers for the seconding in the absence of councillor Marks. Chair, last week's presentation was on a beautiful part of the world in councillor Cummings Ward down at Manly Harbour. And I do have to confess, sorry. No, I'll, I'll take the interjection councillor Cummings. No, I did not get a permit. I was, I was sneaking into your ward under the pretense of teaching my daughter how to drive. And as, as every parent who has a teenager, they're teaching to drive, you often look for a respite somewhere to break up the experience. And it just so happened that the perfect place was the Manly Harbour. And this is where we came across and we sat down and we had fish and chips on the harbour and enjoyed the beautiful vistas of the Winham Ward out to the sea. The, the manager, the construction manager for City Standards actually took us through part of the project. So this was a, a project funded by CPO, and we were taken through the project at City Standards, their component. Now, just to go through some of the components that City Standards looked after, there was obviously some of the infrastructure that was put in, some of it was prefabrication, and there was some lighting as well. To say that it, it turned out really well is a bit of an understatement. Shane took us through and showed us some photos, and I don't think the photos of the project actually did it as good a justice as what is actually on the ground. I would encourage all councillors who, who are teaching their teenage children to drive to go out to Manly Harbour. It's a wonderful spot to stop and have some fish and chips and take in, take in the vista. It's absolutely fantastic. One other thing I would like to mention was the unique projection lighting that's at the Manly Harbour VPP. The, the artist was Delveen Kokatu, and she's done a wonderful job of projecting light artwork onto the pavement out there. Shane did take us through the construction methodology around the prefabricated seating, the pathways, the connectivity. He also touched on some of the consultation that was done locally to facilitate the pathways going in the right way. But ultimately, it is an outstanding piece of infrastructure gone into a beautiful part of the world to service visitors and the good people of the Winham Ward. And I'll leave the rest to the chamber for comment, deputy chair.
Thank you, Miss Chair. Thank you councillor Toomey. It's a great start. Thank you. Is there any debate?
Hi.
Councillor Cumming.
Just briefly, yes, look, I think the project's a very good project. The artist is a Kondamooka lady, and she's done an excellent job. And the, we actually, it was a wider spread of work was proposed, but the Chamber of Commerce, who I've had a lot to do with over the years, they said to me, well, we'd rather focus the money in one spot and make a little, make a little tourist attraction for it. And that's what we did, and they're very happy with the outcome. So thank you for that. And look, if you're taking your daughter to drive, just make sure they don't actually drive into the bay, though. That's the only thing I'm concerned about, sir. Thank you.
Any other debate? Councillor Toomey.
Thank you councillor Cumming. As a new parent to a learner driver, I'll take that into consideration. And it is a wonderful place to stop at night and take in the vista and watch the sun go down. And I suppose that perfectly leads into the nighttime economy, especially out in the Winham Ward. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor Toomey. If there's no other debate, I'll put the motion. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Move to our next report. Councillor Howard, Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee.
Thank you, deputy chair. I move that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 10th of May 2022 be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you councillor Landers. Moved by councillor Howard, seconded by councillor Landers, that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting dated Tuesday the 10th of May 2022 be adopted. Councillor Howard.
Thank you, deputy chair. Before moving to the report, I have some quite sad news that I would like to share with the chamber and to put on record the recognition of Wendy Lovelace, who passed away on the 30th of April. Wendy Lovelace joined Brisbane City Council in February 2019 through council's Disability Action at Work Programme within the Architecture and Building Services Engineering Team, continuing her employment as project coordinator, access and disability within the Access and Inclusion Team, Lifestyle and Community Services. Most recently, she was a valued member of the Brisbane Metro Accessibility Working Group, and over the years Wendy has been involved in many infrastructure and public transport projects, in voluntary advisory roles, and as a consultant for Spinal Life Australia. Wendy was determined to keep living the life she always valued, enjoying the arts, travelling and fine food. Her courage in the face of adversity was remarkable, and even in the days before her passing, she was asked for, asking for updates on the Access and Inclusion Team's work and looking forward to getting out of hospital to be of value again. Wendy was an important figure in the Brisbane disability sector, and Brisbane City Council benefited from her expertise and passion in many ways, both as an employee and as a passionate member of our community. Her passing will be greatly felt across the city. Council sends their condolences to Wendy's family at this difficult time. Mister Deputy Chair, I also want to address the chamber about Idah Hobbit Day. And today marks 32 years since the day that homosexuality was removed from the World Health Organisation's international classification of diseases. To know that this didn't happen until 1990 is an important reminder of the struggles our LGBTIQ plus community have faced and the heartbreaking battle that's endured against the hatred and discrimination that dominated society for far too long. Today, Brisbane joins more than 130 nations around the world in commemorating, in commemorating Idah Hobbit, the International Day Against Homophobia, Biphobia, Intersexism and Transphobia. And as part of that, I was proud to join our very own River City Pride team this morning in raising the rainbow flag at City Hall, a tradition which I've had the honour of contributing to since 2015. And this morning's flag raising was particularly special as we hoisted the new pride flag from City Hall beside the City of Brisbane flag, making it even more special. The progressive flag was designed in 2018 and features black and brown stripes to represent people of colour and baby blue, pink and white to include the trans flag in its design. So from the London Mayor's Office to Boston Pride and now Brisbane City Hall, flying this flag recognises the diversity and intersections within the LGBTQ plus community. And tonight, the Victoria Bridge, the Tropical Display Dome at Brisbane Botanic Gardens, Mount Cotha, and the Story Bridge will all be lit up in rainbow colours in commemoration of Idah Hobbit. A very special day and something I just want to send a big thanks to River City Pride for their ongoing commitment to making Brisbane the inclusive employer that it is, and also, I think, truly representing that they are dedicated to a better Brisbane. Now, I know that you all very much like hearing where I've been and what I've been doing, and as, through you, Mister Deputy Chair, can I say that councillor Cumming, I take credit for anything that happens in the city after 5pm. I think that the nighttime economy is alive and well, and I'd like to thank councillor...
A point of order councillor Sri.
Will councillor Howard take a question?
Of course.
Does councillor Howard take credit for everything that happens after dark in the city?
Well, all the good stuff, can I say? But can I say that listening to councillor Allen before talking about the Brisbane Street Art Festival and the fantastic job that Lincoln Savage does, and Botanica, which of course is being produced by our very own Museum of Brisbane, is fantastic. And I think councillor Sri and councillor Landers joined me on Friday night to launch the Indigenous Art Programme, and I think that all of us can take credit for that wonderful programme. It's been going, I think, since, was it 2015? I get my dates all a little bit confused sometimes, but it's been going for a long time. It's a fantastic programme. It's going to be on our city streets until August, and it really is something that I encourage every councillor to promote, to go online, to see what's happening in your particular area. There'll be some walks around Brisbane. We will be having some displays in some of our... We will be having some displays in some of our laneways and, and across the city. And it really is something that I think that Sam and Amanda from Blacklash should be incredibly proud of. I also had the pleasure of representing the Lord Mayor at the Guides Queensland Grab Your Passport event, which was held at the RNA on the weekend. And again, this saw some of our girl guides from across Queensland meeting for what in fact was the first time in about two years that they'd been able to get together. And everybody was terribly excited. You'll be pleased to know councillor Toomey that our 104 and More were there. And of course, those guys just loved their, their work and were having a great time with, with the guides. We also, I couldn't get to this event, but the Queensland Show Choir had markets and melodies and that was held up at the old museum. So yet again, wonderful to see so many things happening in and around the city. And there was also the Zonta Brisbane City Heart High Tea that was held at Kangaroo Point. So that was happening there. I want to, before I get to the report, which I am getting to, the other event that I went to, and it's sort of quite telling for me to talk about this, and I promise you that I'm not making this up. I attended Graal Theatre at the Windsor School of Arts on Saturday night and the title of the play was Gaslight. So I'll just leave that one right there. But can I move to the report? We had a fantastic report about city halls building maintenance and acoustic system. And that was to tell us why it is so cool in this chamber. So we now all know why it's cold in the chamber. We just have to sort of work out sometimes how we can make that change. The acoustics within city halls auditorium can be adjusted by the BMS system and it suits the type of music that's being played. So yesterday we were hearing the organ being practised in the, in the city hall. And the auditorium is actually designed to take that particular sort of music. So it was a great presentation and I will leave debate to the chamber.
Any debate? No debate? Oh, councillor Toomey.
Sorry, sorry, Deputy Chair. I just wanted to put on the record that through councillor Howard's presentation, we did learn that the reason why it is cold in this room is not because of councillor Wines. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further debate? No debate? I'll put the motion. All those in favour, say aye?
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillor Cunningham, Finance and City Governance Committee.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. I move that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 10th of May, 2022 be adopted.
Seconded.
Moved by councillor Cunningham, seconded by councillor Landers, that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 10 May, 2022 be adopted. Councillor Cunningham.
Yes, thanks, Mr Deputy Chair. Our committee presentation last week was from the Lord Mayor's Administration and Engagement Team on Brisbane's refugee welcome ceremonies. On the 5th of May, the Lord Mayor hosted the 15th Refugee Welcome Ceremony in Brisbane. More than 100 people from refugee backgrounds were officially welcomed at the ceremony held here in City Hall. These events are a great way to celebrate the contributions of refugees and our diverse multicultural community. It also provides opportunities for new arrivals to access information on a range of programmes and services provided by government and non-government agencies, meet with community leaders and of course, network. Council has a longstanding commitment to supporting and assisting refugees from their initial arrival during and after they've settled here. We pride ourselves on being both welcoming and inclusive to all people and we're proud of that diversity and rich cultural life. The most powerful moment in the ceremony is always the guest speaker. This year's speaker was Dukku For. Dukku was born in Uganda and raised in a refugee camp before arriving in Australia on a refugee visa in 2007. He actually overcame a speech impediment to become a public speaker and went on to find, to found Rich Dreams, a platform that provides a safe space for people to showcase their success and journey and build connections. Mr Deputy Chair, these ceremonies are a great, great way to help welcome all our new residents to Brisbane and I thank the LMAE team for all their work in this initiative. We also had the Bank and Investment Report for March 2022 and I'll leave the rest to the chamber.
Thank you, councillor. Any debate? No debate? All those in favour, say aye?
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, are there any petitions? Councillor McGlaughlin?
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. I have a petition from residents of Hamilton requesting investigation and recommendations to rectify a blocked overland flow path on Royal Terrace, Hamilton.
Thank you. No other petitions? Councillor Landes, may I have a motion for, oh, sorry, sorry.
Sorry, Deputy Chair, I was late rising. I have a petition requesting council coordinate with the Queensland Government to upgrade the Chelsea Road causeway and the Lota Creek boardwalk, order right off-road walking and cycling connections between Thornside and Lota.
Thank you, councillor. Any other petitions? Councillor Griffiths?
A petition on behalf of councillor Johnston in relation to Vena Road roundabout modification.
Thank you. Any, any other petitions? No? Councillor Landes, may I have a motion for receipt of the petition?
You may. Mr Chair, I move that the petitions, as presented, be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Landers, seconded by councillor Griffiths, that the petitions, as presented, be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report. All those in favour, say aye?
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Now move to general business.
Chair?
Oh, you're absolutely right. Thank you, councillor. Much appreciated.
I thought I'd draw it to your attention.
I'm glad you have. He should come up. It should be the Peter and Peter show. Councillors, are there any statements required as a result of an office, of an office of the Independent Assessor or councillor Ethics Committee order? No? Are there any matters of general business?
Chair?
Councillor Alderman?
Thank you, thank you, acting chair. I rise to inform the chamber about another highly successful Brookfield show last weekend, held under albeit very challenging conditions. The Brookfield show always throws up something out of left field and this year is no different. To say the wet weather in the week leading up to and during the event posed a number of issues for the organisers would be an understatement. The fact that it even went ahead itself was a massive achievement. But come Sunday night, despite the lower than expected number of people through the turnstiles, it's fair to say that the 111th Brookfield show was a success in every sense. The organising committee under the leadership of President and tireless community worker Cath Thornton is to be commended for delivering an event that featured something of interest to everyone. One of the show highlights always is the horse jumping, but as you can appreciate, with the showgrounds being so wet and the potential for injury to riders and horses, the decision was made to cancel those events. This was a major disappointment to competitors and spectators. But jumps steward Julie Jolly was stoic and assures me she's already talking about a bigger and better programme in 2023. The rodeo programme and sheep herding events were restructured, given the state of the showgrounds' oval service and most of the other activities were able to proceed without a hitch. The standard favourites, the wood chopping and the guinea pig racing, were again big hits with the children, who also flocked to the, flocked to sideshow alley and the baby animals area, where they could mingle freely with baby goats and lambs. The needlecrafts and patchwork returned after a three-year hiatus and was as popular as ever, as was the art pavilion and the Brookfield CWA stand. Acting Chair, I want to thank our Lord Mayor, Adrian Srinar, for taking time out of his very busy schedule and coming out on a very wet Saturday night to open the show. He didn't hesitate when asked about his availability and I'm guessing his four children also thanked him for doing so on the way home. They got to experience and enjoy something unique in the city that many kids like me took for granted when growing up while growing up in the bush. In opening the show, the Lord Mayor presented James Booth with the trophy as winner of the Brookfield and District Community Award for 2022. I can't recall ever being at the showgrounds and not seeing James volunteering in some capacity. So it was appropriate to see his contribution to our community recognised in this way. Acting Chair, the Brookfield show is promoted as Brisbane's biggest little country show and that couldn't be a more appropriate description. For those of you who know or have visited this very beautiful part of the Bourne Vale ward will know that its residents are rightly very proud and parochial about where they live. It's a community that sticks together and looks after each other during the tough times, as we saw during the recent flood, and celebrates the good times like no other. And there's always someone putting their hand up to help and volunteer in some capacity. Acting Chair, I know there is a risk when you single someone out for recognition that you can easily overlook other important contributions. But the standouts obviously were the many hardworking volunteers on the show society who were like ducks, calm on the surface, but furiously paddling underwater, literally, to deliver the event through to the various stewards and rotary clubs of the western suburbs, which staff the entry gates and manage the car parking. I did my share of stints at the turnstiles and at the information counter on Saturday and Sunday and there's few better ways to engage with your local community. Acting Chair, what we saw on the weekend was Brookfield at its very best and on a show to the rest of Brisbane. And I can only encourage everyone to mark the second weekend of May, 2023 in their diaries for an event that I can guarantee all of the family will enjoy and remember for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Any other general business? Councillor Strong?
Yes, Deputy Chair. I rise to speak on a couple of events. And the first one, it would be very remiss if I didn't raise this, being that we've spent a lot of time today speaking about the domestic and family violence issue and what our strategy around that is. But out in the, out in the suburbs, there, there's been a group that's been undertaking this work for a number of years now. And it's a candlelight vigil, which is, which they've now renamed to update it, a candlelit circle, which sees a number of agencies come together in the civic centre that actually, as I say, over the years has built up more and more numbers for people, not just from the agency, but from the local community in that mall section of the civic centre. I just wanted to mention some of those agencies that have undertaken this work and, and, and first, first of all is the Queensland Police Service have always been there and backing this particular event every year. Chiabra, the Hub Community Projects, which is, which has decamped from where they were up to Richlands now, but they've got a bigger space and, and more, more facilities to do those important projects like, like this particular one that I'm talking about tonight. Nala Community House, one of our biggest agencies in the, in my ward and the Brisbane Domestic Violence Service and MICA projects as well. All these community groups and more have come together since at least, I think, nineteen, sorry, nineteen, 2015, right? For this, for this event, which is actually happening on the 26th of May this year at, at 5:30. We know that cultural, cultural and linguistic diversity can be at, at an increase of risk of experienced domestic and family violence. And they also face additional barriers to, to reporting the offences and seeking support. And these agencies try to overcome some of that because we do have a very large and diverse community in my ward. And they really need to understand what our, what our laws are about and what protections there are, especially in this particular area that we've been speaking a lot about today. This, this, this year, of course, the theme is all of us together. This theme drives home the message that to achieve real and lasting positive cultural change, all levels of society need to be involved to take action against domestic and family violence. The other, the other events, it's multiple events and that's the biggest morning teas are coming up. And I know our, our churches and our seniors and pensioners undertake this fundraising every year, bar from, bar one year with COVID that we really couldn't meet at all in the, in the civic hall. But, and or at the Uniting Church. But more and more every year, a lot of the organisations are, are getting together to raise money for this. And, and it's really, it's, it's really a challenge in my ward office because of course they all want raffle prizes, of course. So we do more and more every year and, but they raise more and more money, which is very important. Thank you, Deputy Chair.
Thank you, councillor. Is there any further general business? As there's no further business, I declare the meeting closed. Thanks, Charles. Quick meetings are good.